She appreciates that, yeah.
Hi, guys.
Like grandma.
She's a doll. Yeah.
Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for invocation. Casey Hickson, President of the Laurel Class with the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints.
Hi. Our dear heavenly Father, we are so grateful for this day. We're so grateful that we're all able to be here tonight. We're so grateful for this town and for the rain that we have received in the past couple of days. And please bless us tonight that the Town Council will be able to work effectively and make good decisions to benefit our town and the safety of our town. Please bless that we will be able to get along and make decisions. We're so grateful for the town and please bless our safety. We say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Casey. Roll call, please, Bev.
Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Vice Mayor Yates.
Present.
Councilmember Dickey.
Here.
Councilmember Elke.
Here.
Councilmember Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilwoman Blichet.
Here.
Okay, I'll start out with my mayor's report. First, I'd just like to say that it's been a great honor to be your mayor for the last two years. I want to sincerely thank you for putting your trust and confidence in me once again by electing me to a second term. I look forward to serving our beautiful community for the next two years. I would first like to report on my attendance at the League of Cities and Towns Conference. I attended quite a few of the same seminars that actually Ken Buchanan attended. One was the emergency preparedness and one on regional transportation. I also attended the legislative update on what to expect in the new session. There were a few more sessions I took part in, but those were the best. Councilwoman Dickey was also there, and I'm sure she attended quite a few of the seminars, maybe some different than we did, so we can follow up on what we learned there. Besides seminars, I had some great interaction with my fellow mayors, all 91 of us at the same place at the same time is a great asset when you want to discuss the economy of the state, transportation, tourism, and everything else that affects all of us. I was excited to hear that some of the smaller municipalities are doing quite well. I also met with some of our service providers, Republic Services, SRP. I didn't get the opportunity for a meeting with Epcor management. I don't know how that happened, but I did talk with their operations supervisor about the many problems that our residents have been experiencing. Now I have a little bit of exciting news that I'd like to share with you. There were a few openings on the League Executive Committee, so I threw my hat in and quite a few other applicants, and I am excited to report that I was chosen to serve for the next two years. I know there's going to be a lot more time involved, especially when the legislature is in session, but I'm looking forward to being a part of that executive committee. To me, this means a lot more attention to Fountain Hills, and it will allow me to keep a closer eye on any actions taken that could cause harm to our town, like that previous TPT bill. Of course, I will always look out for bills that will benefit us. This fall, we had the first MAGA meeting. It was primarily focused on bilateral trade with Mexico and an update on their online business site called BN. Now, on the fun side, my mayor's youth council had an awesome retreat last weekend. I want to thank staff member Heather Ware for putting the entire program together. We commandeered the community center Saturday night into Sunday morning. It was a great success, bringing camaraderie among the different grade levels from freshman to senior, discussing current issues that teenagers are facing, making plans for the coming year, and just having a really fun time. Heather and I are still recovering from sleeping on the floor, what little sleep we did get, but we woke up Sunday morning and picked up trash along our adopted street, Westby. Many residents stopped to talk to the students and thanked them, which was a very good ending to our retreat. And that's my report. Thank you. I want to announce that Consent Agenda Items Two and Three have been removed and put on the regular agenda at the request of Councilmember Hanson. And now I will read a proclamation for National Employer Support of the Guard and Reserve Week for September 22nd to the 26th. Employer Support of the Guard and Reserve Week. Whereas National Guard and Reserve Forces comprise nearly half of our nation's military strength and are essential to America's national security, and Reserve Component Forces stand ready to answer the call to serve, whether serving alongside active-duty counterparts all across the globe or responding to humanitarian crisis at home and abroad. And whereas employers provide critical support to members of the National Guard and Reserve, allowing citizen warriors to serve whenever the nation calls, often foregoing financial gain and making sacrifices in the process. And whereas employer support is stronger than ever, more than 41 years after President Richard Nixon authorized the Secretary of Defense to establish the National Committee for Employer Support of the Guard and Reserve, and whereas our nation is in debt to the citizen warriors departing the comforts of home to ensure our freedoms remain intact. And likewise, America pays special tribute to the commitment of dedicated and supportive employers who continue to make service in the Reserve Components possible. Now, therefore, I lend to M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the town of Fountain Hills, Arizona, due declare September 22nd to the 26th, 2014 as National Employer Support of the Guard and Reserve Week in Fountain Hills. Thank you. Okay, let's see. Now we will go to a presentation update by Councilmember Ginny Dickey regarding the recent Maricopa Association of Governors Regional Domestic Violence Council meeting held September 4th, 2014.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I did attend that last meeting, my last meeting of the council on the 4th. I thanked them, of course, and again informed them that I would ask if anybody from the Town Council or from PSAC or anything, anybody from Fountain Hills would like to be appointed a member, and they sent me this information. I think I sent it to Kim, but I'll keep that aside on how to do that if we should want to do something like that. So MAGA is requesting a couple of things from us. One, to become a partner in a grant request that addresses domestic violence through the criminal justice system, which is... Oh, and then the other part is that they're asking us if we have any activities or anything that we would like to publicize for the Domestic Violence Awareness Month in October, and even if we have events that go through to November. So they would actually put it on their calendar for us, and it would be publicized. October is Domestic Violence Month. The purple ribbon is what you wear for that. There's going to be a press conference. It's called Voices for Justice. It's on October 7th at 9:00 a.m., and it's going to be at ASU, at Sandra Day O'Connor College of Law. It's going to include the mayor of Youngtown, who's the current Chair of MAGA Regional Council, but he's moving over. Steve Campbell, who's the chief of the city of El Mirage, and he's actually the Chair of the Domestic Violence Council. And then Maricopa County Attorney Bill Montgomery will be at this also. There's going to be a domestic violence survivor who will give a little talk, and then Robin Barker, who's the vice mayor of Apache Junction and the vice chair of our group. So that will be, again, on the 7th. I wanted to mention that if we have anything going on, and I couldn't think of anything, and I know I gave you all's emails about that, but if there's anything that Chief Roberts or Care Fountain Hills or our courts or any of the groups in town are planning to do that, or if they're having an event or training or anything, they can loop in to that event, and there would be an October announcement. I think I told you earlier that MAGA had indicated that when we signed on to the start by believing, we signed that proclamation, that we would maybe be included on that day. So that's also a possibility. The other thing I wanted to recommend again is about this grant. So MAGA is applying for, I'm just going to read this, a stop grant through the governor's office to support our Protocol Evaluation Project. The goal of the project, which is what we've been working on in the council all this time, is to improve the way we arrest and prosecute domestic violence offenders. We are inviting all police departments, prosecutor, prosecution offices, victim advocate units, cities, towns, Native American communities to please become formal partners in this project and sign on to the grant. I would recommend that, if possible. I know I sent it to Andrew for some advice to see if it would be something that we could do, but it would be great if we could assist on this grant, particularly now, and I know we've talked about the fact that the Super Bowl is coming and the connection that that has not only with the human trafficking, but also with domestic violence and all this darn NFL incidents that have come up recently, even in the state of Arizona, unfortunately. A lot of discussion about that now. There's been some discussion that in Arizona, that domestic violence abusers, they're not under state law barred necessarily from possessing firearms. The FBI said that there's an average 38 domestic violence homicides per year in Arizona, and of those, 22 or 61% of those are by firearms. So again, I would also like to take the opportunity right now to say that a lifelong friend of mine and strong advocate for domestic violence her whole life, Dr. Jenny Gurrell, who is the wife, was the wife of Jerry Gurrell, who is a longtime Chair of ours for the Community Services Commission, passed away yesterday. I just wanted to mention that because it was relevant to this report, that Arizona has lost a strong voice. She's been there for years. I've known her for almost 30 of those, and I wanted to mention her in what this is now my final report, and hopefully somebody will take this on to represent us locally on this commission. Thanks, Council.
All right. Thank you. And on behalf of the council, I would like to thank you for being on that MAGA commission. It's not only an extremely important commission doing great work, but also to provide a voice for Fountain Hills and to bring back to us all the knowledge that you've been able to acquire from going to all the meetings. I know it's time-consuming. It's something extra you did for us, so thank you very much. Do we have call to the public? Anything?
No, Mayor.
All right. We'll go on to our Consent Agenda. We only have two items now, number one and number four. Can I get a motion to accept those as written?
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call, please.
Mayor Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Councilmember Dickey.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yates.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Elke.
Aye.
Councilmember Blichet.
Aye.
Mayor 7-0.
Thank you, Bev. And we'll start our regular agenda items. Consideration of Improving an Encroachment Permit Application Submitted by Carolyn Redendo, Sofrida LLC for the Purpose of Extending the Existing Outdoor Seating and Dining Area.
Thank you, Mayor. I just drew these slides together quickly because I wasn't expecting it to come off consent, but there are actually two requests as part of this submission, the encroachment permit and the extension of premise, the liquor license. This shows the current encroachment permit. It's previously approved by the council. There's a long fenced area in front of the restaurant and then a smaller, the round circle near the shade structure. That was for the entertainers. And this is how the currently fenced-off area in front of the restaurant looks now. The top-left picture shows the additional area in red that's being proposed tonight to be included within the encroachment permit. This area would be fenced, very similar to what you just saw in the previous slide, to allow for seating and dining in that area. The top-right picture is kind of a street view of that same thing, showing approximately where the fence would go. It's an overlay that I tried to put on over the front of the restaurant to show you how that's going to work. The bottom picture is actually put together by the applicant to show their extension of premise. They are actually expanding into three areas. The square area is the fenced area that we just talked about for the, that's on the public sidewalk. This is the old curved space here. They're occupying that already, or they're already leasing it. And then this is a small courtyard between shops in here, which they would like to also be able to use as part of their extension of premise. And staff recommends approval of both permits as proposed, and the applicant is here if you have any questions.
Okay, thanks, Bob. I'll go to Councilwoman Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor. The reason I asked to have these taken off, there were just a couple of things in the staff report that drew my attention. One was the comment that staff had received complaints during the past year, which should be addressed in order for the proposal to be approved, and that was access around the fence, dining area occasionally being blocked by dogs, the clear path between the fence and the curb while meeting ADA requirements is narrow and has caused inconveniences to more than one passerby, and ADA access within the enclosed area has occasionally been blocked when patrons move tables or chairs around. And since it stated that we should somehow address these, I thought we should have the opportunity to either have any discussion on them or as to how we might want to modify the motion to include reference to those. The other thing was in the liquor, in the extension application, the area that, the part of the building that's going to be, where the new patio is going to be in front of, was just identified with the address in Suite 105. So it wasn't clear that the relation to Sofrida's, and driving by, it looks like they're adding patio in front of an empty building. So I thought that might be good to clarify, you know, we didn't know about the lease at the time, but what that use might be, if they're actually extending, if Sofrida's is going to move into that, or just what the extension is going to be in front of. So if we could just have some clarification on that.
Would you like Carolyn to explain?
Sure.
Hi, Carolyn.
Okay, good evening. Hi. Yes, we're going to be extending into Curves, and that room will be used as a banquet.
Just so the record, you're Carolyn Redendo.
Oh, I'm sorry. Carolyn Redendo, owner of Sofrida LLC.
Okay.
Yes, we'll be extending into Curves, so the building will be used as a catering banquet hall in the evenings primarily, and during the day, we might have a bit of a gift shop selling our crosses and religious items, you know, on the walls. And I did put the separate address because it is considered a separate address and separate suite number, mainly for insurance reasons, you know, like there are two separate buildings. And we would be using the patio up front in front of Curves, also the interior for seating at night, mainly during the primarily fall and spring seasons, probably not as much in the summer. And then in the courtyard, if we have cocktail hours or wine hors d'oeuvres and receptions, they would kind of go into the courtyard area that's provided. And the other two tenants usually leave during the day, so we would have that access at night, which is primarily when we would use that courtyard area.
So no fencing would extend around the courtyard?
The courtyard is already fenced through the owner of the building, so that courtyard is fenced. For safety reasons, they have a lock in the front and back, and it was mainly done prior to us going in there for safety reasons, because there's two exterior bathrooms available there.
Okay, that helps to clarify. Makes it much more clear.
Oh, yeah, no, no.
Rather than just the Suite 105.
Yeah, I just put that because as far as, because we don't have that whole building. We just have half of the building. There's three suites in that building.
And then, Carolyn, on the other three, the complaints that have occurred over the past year, can you maybe just share how you try to mitigate?
Yeah, sometimes we do have groups, you know, of more, the seating is primarily four to six to a table or two. So we do move the tables, but we try to make sure that we have available space to go in and out. Usually, when we move tables, we try to do it towards the end of the fence, like not towards the entrance for the wheelchair accessibility, and we try to, you know, accommodate according to how we can. But we do sometimes get groups of 10 or 12 that want to sit kind of together. When we realize we can't do it, we'll tell them that the tables have to be separated. We do have the pets that go outside, and that was the reason primarily, you know, for the fence now. We have a separate dog permit, so the dog permit requires us to have it fenced in, and we don't allow the guests to tie the dogs down. You know, if that happened, that was on our site, not to have noticed that.
Okay, thank you.
I wasn't aware that you needed a fence for a dog patio. Is that a rule of someone's?
It's through the Maricopa. They have a separate, the dog patio, it's probably only like two years or a year and a half that there's a permit for that. And then there's a requirement to be fenced in, and then that, they do come and check the way they check for food license permits, like they do periodic checks, and to make sure that we wash down the patio and things like that.
So the breezeway that's on the side that you're going to use for kind of cocktails? So then that's...
We would be extending it and then having food access, but since we realize we do get quite a bit of pet owners, we think that we would get pet owners perhaps there as well.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have any questions? Councilwoman Yates?
Carolyn, with some of the new laws, especially here in town, you're not required, at least through the liquor department, that you have to have the fence outside. Would that help you in any way, shape, or form that you didn't even need the fence, other than the dog license? That's a part of that as well.
I think currently, probably because of the dog license, I would have to, you know, review that, but I think, I know with the dog license, we did need the fence.
Okay.
And then the other fence was primarily for the owner of the building. They had some problems with people accessing those bathrooms late at night, so they wanted that area, the courtyard, fenced in.
Councilman Elke.
Hi, Carolyn.
Oh, hi.
I understand that you're going to be doing a catering business in the old Curves building that you're leasing now?
Yeah, what we're doing is sometimes we get requests for groups of like 15 or 20. We do try to accommodate them in the restaurant or outside, but it is kind of difficult the way we're kind of small, so we figured perhaps like wedding rehearsals and things like that, we would accommodate in that room. So it'd be more privacy.
Okay, so you're going to be allowed to do bigger events and activities.
Correct, correct, yes.
Okay, in the event that you decided to no longer lease that property or that larger building, would you still need that extension? Would it be your intention to remove that extension? The only reason I ask is if you no longer lease that, we're putting basically a fence in front of whomever else may want to lease it after you.
Oh, no, that's a good question. Yeah, if we ever decided in the future, I guess it would be separated, because it is two separate buildings, you know, that's the thing. But, you know, for now, we hope to stay there for quite a bit of time. Yeah, we hope so, too.
We appreciate your business. Mayor, I just wanted to ask Bob a question along those lines, if no one else had any questions. Carolyn.
Carolyn, why don't you just sit right there, just in case? Okay?
Bob, how could we, just based on that last question that I asked, in the event that Ms. Redendo decided to no longer rent that building, I would like to not encumber that building from somebody else that may want to lease it by having the fence out there. What would you suggest in...
Well, it's an encroachment permit to allowing them to use it on public property, so you could just remove that encroachment permit for that section and pull the fence out.
Right. It would just be a matter of maybe putting it back to where it is presently.
Put it back to their property line.
Is there anything that the town can just rescind at any time? Is that your understanding?
It's town property, yep.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we didn't encumber that for anybody else that may want to rent it in the future. All right, thank you, Bob.
Councilwoman Blichet.
Thank you, Mayor. Carolyn, do y'all currently have that property leased?
Yes, we already have it leased. We've had it since the beginning of September, when Curves moved out.
Thank you.
Okay, and a three-year lease, yeah.
And it's not really a question for you, but I guess that as I want it to be ADA compliant, I think that heavy trash can, trash receptacle that's there would have to be removed? Is that the town's or...
The pictures don't reflect, Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, the pictures don't reflect, there's a, well, there is, I'm sorry, but there is a trash can. I've got a dead one. Sorry. Here we go. There's a trash can that's right there. I don't know, Bob, does that, does that cause a pinch between the proposed new fence? No, that's out towards the street. That's almost to the curb. There's as well on the other side of that. So that still will have four foot? Yes. Okay, thank you.
Okay, sounds good, Sam. All right, thanks. Anybody else for Carolyn? No? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, there's no more council discussion? Would you like to make a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I move to approve the liquor license application, extension of premises patio permit submitted by Carolyn Redendo, owner, agent of Sofrida.
Second? All right. Any further discussion?
Is that the right one?
That's number three.
Encroachment permit? All right, you want to do them backwards?
Yeah, Andrew said we can do them backwards.
Yeah, the mayor seconded.
No, I asked for a second.
Oh, I apologize.
Henry seconded. All right. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor 7-0.
Okay, now we need the other one. You want to do that one, too?
Mayor. Move to approve encroachment permit area extension for the Sofrida Restaurant located at 16848 East Avenue, The Fountains, as presented, subject to the applicant continuing to abide by the conditions of the existing permit.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor 7-0.
Okay, congratulations, Carolyn, Anthony. And on behalf of everybody, thank you for your business in town, for both of them. All right, next is, let's see, we've got consideration of appointing four individuals to the Planning and Zoning Commission, each to a two-year term, beginning October 1st, 2014, and ending October 1st, 2016. The committee has three names to recommend. I move to appoint Stan Konik, Howie Jones, and Jeremy Strohan. Okay, and I'd just like to tell a little something about them before we vote on it. Stan Konik is a returning member of Planning and Zoning Commission. Stan was first appointed to the commission in 2010, so this is his third time being appointed as a Planning and Zoning Commissioner. Stan is a professional architect who brings valuable knowledge and experience to the commission's deliberations. He also teaches an urban design class at the high school, so he's no stranger to giving back to our community. Is Stan here? I don't see him. Okay. Howie Jones, Mr. Jones is also a returning member of Planning and Zoning Commission. This will be the second time Howie has been appointed to the commission, but the first, but this is the first full term. Howie was first appointed to the commission in June of this year to fill a vacancy created when another sitting commissioner moved out of state. Prior to being approved to P&amp;Z, Howie was also a valuable member of the Public Safety Advisory... Advisory Commission, where he served since 2011. I don't see Howie here, but thank you, both of you, for your past service and for being willing to serve again. New to the commission is Jeremy Strohan. He's being appointed to the commission for his first term. Jeremy is a professional in a multidisciplinary design firm that deals in land development, strategy, zonings, entitlements, site design, and master planning. His experience and technical know-how will bring additional knowledge and professionalism to an already top-rated planning and zoning commission, and we are very happy he has volunteered to serve. All right, so I have a, I have a second, and any council discussion on the appointments? If not, all in favor? Any opposed?
Mayor seven zero.
All right, congratulations to all three gentlemen, and thank you. Agenda items six and seven, we have one staff report, but we will require two motions. Ken, do you want to start with six? Approval of, consideration of approving a special event application and cosponsorship for the 2014 Oktoberfest event sponsored by the Southwest German Society, Sons of Amvets, and Fountain Hills Elks Lodge, number 2846, to be held in Fountain Park on September 26, 27, 2014.
Again, Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, you have in your packet a special events request and special event liquor license request for the Southwest German Society, Sons of Amvets, and Fountain Hills Elks Lodge to hold the annual Oktoberfest event to be at Fountain Park, as you said, September 26 and 27. If you have any questions, the community services staff is here. Any particulars part of it, but it's, from what we've seen in the permit, it's the same as usual, and we recommend approval on both.
Any questions on number six? If not, I'll read number seven. Consideration of approving a special event liquor license application submitted by the Sons of Amvets Squadron Seven for the purpose of a fundraiser scheduled for September 26, 27, 2014, from 5 to 10 o'clock at Fountain Park. Any discussion on that one? Okay, I need two motions, so take a motion for number six first, for the special event application.
Mayor, I move to approve the special event application and cosponsorship. Move to approve the special event liquor license as presented.
Mayor, second.
Okay, all in, that was for the special event application and cosponsorship?
And cosponsorship.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor seven zero.
Okay, and I'll need a motion for the special event liquor license application.
It's there as well.
I think that was one...
I need two motions, so I need a second motion.
No, that's part of the motion that I made. It's the special event liquor license as presented.
One's in that, one's just a special event application, and one's a special event liquor license.
I'm supposed to get one for each.
They're both in there.
I know. Okay.
Two more.
Do you need a... I'm sorry, Mayor.
You want two motions?
Two motions, one for the event application, one for the liquor license.
Well, excuse me, it's written up as a suggestion, suggestion motion. Okay, let's start over, Mayor.
Okay.
I move to approve the special event application.
And cosponsorship.
And cosponsorship.
All right.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and next one.
Mayor, I move to approve the special event liquor license as presented.
Mayor, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor seven zero.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may, just on those last two items, I think it's important to point out that with our new cosponsorship policy, we do have the IRS letter in there identifying the organization as a 501(c)(19), so that's consistent. So thank you, staff, for making sure that we're up to speed on that.
All right, thank you. Number eight, presentation and discussion of the tourism program with possible direction to staff regarding moving forward with marketing and promotional strategies. Ken?
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, you know, the town of Fountain Hills took over the tourism initiative earlier this year, and the community services department was charged with administering the program. The staff has a presentation with an update on the initiative, as well as the marketing strategies that were being proposed. It's a staff recommendation to move ahead with those, forward with the tourism and marketing strategies as presented, and we'll have community services staff come and give a presentation to the council regarding those changes in strategies.
My name is Rachel Goodwin. I'm a new staff member here with the town of Fountain Hills. I joined the team in, I guess, the end of June. Since that time, Grace and I have been diligently working on the tourism promotion and the package. And so we're here this evening to update you on that outlook and the plans for the tourism initiative. We are looking to confirm that they are in line with the council's vision for this, for the Fountain Hills, for the program. So, to start us off tonight, in our theory, a picture is worth a thousand words. What does this picture say to you guys? I imagine it probably says it's a little bit dated. If you look at the background, you see that there's some development that has changed over time. It says it's a very pretty residential area in a desert community, and it's a very traditional picture of our fountain. Overall, it's very, very pretty, but it's a little bit uninspired. It's changed so much over time, just as our town has. So what does this picture say to you? In our opinion, this picture has more of a dynamic quality to it. It is a bit more impressive, but really what it says is that it's the same fountain, it's our same lake, but it's a different perspective. And by a change in perspective, you see things in a different vision, you see things in a different way. And that's kind of what we're trying to do with the tourism program. We want to keep the same concept of the tourism, but we want to change the perspective to help Fountain Hills be seen in a new way. So...
All right. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. To quickly summarize where we lost, apologize, a little short for the podium.
Just pull the mic close to you. There you go.
So to quickly summarize where we were when I last spoke with you, we have, I am happy to report that we have stayed true to our last presentation, keeping up with the creation of our identity, experience Fountain Hills. It is the cornerstone of our marketing scheme, and it is also the handle for all of our social media and everything that we put online. It's a verb, it's an initiative. We are asking folks to please experience Fountain Hills. We have continued with our analytical database, strengthened our partnership with Fort McDowell, and continued the distribution of our collateral, such as the visitor's guide and the dining guide. We've also implemented the promotion of our calendar of events. To quickly take a look at our budget, it has come a few slight changes since I last presented to you. Rachel and I have been very diligent about evaluating all of our expenditures, and as you'll see further in the presentation, our different marketing schemes and things that were handed to us from the chamber. You can see that one particular expenditure has been canceled. We are looking to spend our dollars wisely and to make sure that what we are paying for and the services that we seek are in line with our marketing scheme and are accomplishing what we set out to accomplish.
So what have we been up to over the summer? Over the summer, we jumped in with both feet. We really took a look and evaluated a comprehensive plan that includes all of these items. It includes a strategic marketing and message. It concludes stakeholder development, a more detailed and focused marketing and advertising effort, expanded analytics, expanded surveys. We've contracted with both a photographer and a graphic designer to redesign our print ads, as well as continued work on our website. You'll notice, we'll get a little more into that later, but one of the big things was making it mobile-friendly, as well as taking inventory of our current collateral, which Grace just touched on, our dining guides, our visitor's guides, as well as looking at where we can expand those and jump into new publications. So our new message that we hope to present is called the Find Your Fountain campaign. What does Fountain Hills mean to you? That answer is different for everybody. Fountain Hills is a luxury community, it's a golfing community, it's a fun and adventure community, it's a dining community. We have all of these different elements, but they all bring together what Fountain Hills can be and should be. The idea is that we want each person to come to our community and find what it is that makes Fountain Hills unique to them. Whatever it is, we want you to find your fountain. The Fountain, the Find Your Fountain campaign is supported by what we call the four Fs. Getting an F has never been so fun. We call it the Fun, Fresh, Family, and Fast. Fun, because we are a fun community. Fresh is because we want to have a new look at what we offer here. We have fun and exciting things going on here in Fountain Hills. Family, because we are open to all generations, whether it's a young family or whether it's empty nesters, whatever it is, we have something going on here in Fountain Hills for you. And fast, we all know there's a misconception that Fountain Hills seems to be this little community tucked away in the northeast corner. Well, guess what? We're right next to Scottsdale. We're 20, 25 minutes from that airport. We are fast, we are easy to get to. So our campaign really focuses on that adventure isn't one size fits all. We want to help come find your fountain in Fountain Hills and gain a fresh perspective on what it means to live for the weekend. We've also introduced a new hashtag that is #FindYourFountain. Anybody out there that wants to tweet can do so with that hashtag. So what we are also doing, we also mentioned that we are working with our stakeholders and developing and deepening those relationships. We've identified those, obviously Fort McDowell, Yavapai Nation is a big partner with us, as well as the Arizona Office of Tourism, reaching out to both the Scottsdale and Phoenix CVBs, and then a real emphasis on a lot of our local folks that support, that support the tourism efforts. They all have a vested interest in seeing our tourism succeed. That includes our hoteliers, our restaurants, our golf courses, and our adventure and recreation folks.
All right, so now we take a look at our print advertising. As I mentioned earlier, Rachel and I have taken a great deal of time in evaluating the collateral and the schemes that were handed over to us from the chamber. And as you can see here, this is an example of a print advertisement that was given to us from the chamber. And after many, many discussions, Rachel and I kind of came to the conclusion and the impression that by using some of this stock photography, that it kind of portrays the image that this could be anywhere. It doesn't scream Fountain Hills, it doesn't shout who we are, what we're aiming for, or what we'd like you to come and do with our town. This advertisement has been used for several years in a row, and as I'm sure you know, when you use something for that long in an unrevitalized way, it kind of becomes white noise in the background. And so by seeking out a graphic designer, we have designed a brand-new ad, and here it is. It emphasizes our four Fs. Again, getting an F just never looked so good. Of course, we have our cornerstone photo of the fountain. It's our namesake, it's what people know us as, and it's gorgeous. Below that, what you'll see is we feature some pictures of activities. What Rachel and I are finding is that people want to be engaged, not only through photography, but through photography of activities. They don't want to see heavy text copies and advertisements, they want to see what they can come and do. And so we highlight some cornerstones for things we feel like our town is known for, hiking and biking. We have these incredible trails, outdoor adventure, cattle drives, riding horses, you know, things that you can literally come and do. It's a verb, and we want you to come experience Fountain Hills.
So as I mentioned a moment ago, the website has been one of our other platforms that we've been working on. The website as received was not in a mobile-friendly platform, so we have been working with a new designer to help us get that to be mobile-responsive, whether it be on iPhones, tablets, whatever you have, just to make it more usable for, across the board, for any users, despite whatever device you have. We are continuing to work on that to make the website cohesive with the rest of our marketing changes. So the ad that Grace just showed you, we hope to make the website reflective of those same changes, featuring the same fonts, some of the same wording, some of the same photos, so that, again, it's a cohesive marketing effort across the board, whether you're in print, whether you're online, wherever you might see us. You know, when you see those colors, when you see that font, when you see that, you know that it's the official Fountain Hills effort. Now on to another platform, which is our social media. Our social media was not really performing to its full potential. We definitely saw some increases, but it really needed a little TLC, so Grace and I took a look at it and kind of determined that we were going to do a little test marketing. We were grateful to receive this image from a local photographer here in town, Jeff Qualter, so thank you to him. He gave us permission to use this image, which we instituted in a two-week campaign, so to see if Facebook really was an effective platform for us. Are people on Facebook really paying attention to what we're doing? Do they really want to engage with us? So we posted this out there to see what would happen. And so this is, this is the results. Our results basically said, yes, this is a very, very popular platform for us. It's a very user-friendly platform. We posted this photo for two weeks. In that time, we had over 100, over 100 likes, we had 38 shares, and it was seen by over 1,000 people. That really culminated to show that it was, had the most attention than any other photo we've ever posted. That really told us that people do want to engage with us, people do want to know what's going on in Fountain Hills. We just have to put it out there. We have to offer more than an average post. We need to put out engaging material that gets folks interested and active with us.
All right, and as we move on to my personal favorite analytics, so what happens when we boost? As Rachel mentioned, for our previous slide, we applied some Facebook advertising, and for a small $65 budget, this is what we received. We had a 22% increase in total likes, and that catapulted us over 1,700. We were averaging 10 new likes every day, and our reach and engagement was close to 7,000 people, which was up 1,200% compared to other posts and what we were doing in the past. And this is particularly impressive, considering we launched this campaign during the summer, which everyone knows is a slower time in Fountain Hills. It's too hot to have some of our special events and some of our outdoor activities, and so the number of activities drops off, but we were able to, in a slow time during the year, increase engagement, which I think is quite impressive. So a quick snapshot of our analytics, where we left off in April, we were hovering around 1,300 people. As of August, just after we finished the campaign, we were just over 1,700. We have brought in over 300 new likes, and again, engagement is close to 7,000 people. And if you'll notice, we're engaging more people than who like our page. And so what it says about Facebook is that you can, if you have quality content, you can engage more people than who specifically like your page. And so the information's out there, the want is out there, and we can certainly push our information out to more people than who specifically subscribe to us. And so what's next for us? The million-dollar question seems to be, how can we evaluate our program and make sure that we are not only spending wisely, but that we are reaching people effectively? And we think that that is through iPad surveying. Given the opportunity to use an iPad, a tablet, some kind of mobile device, we feel that we can capture data offline. We can ask engaging questions, such as, how did you hear about us? Or where are you visiting from? These are incredibly important to our program, because if we don't know where people are or how they would like to hear about us, then how can we possibly reach them? And we need to make sure that we are engaging them across the different medias that they like to be engaged on. If I advertise with a magazine and then go out and apply this survey, and as you take it, you say to me, what the heck is XYZ magazine? Well, I know then and there that that is not an effective engagement, and we can immediately change our marketing strategy to gear towards where people are. So it's incredibly important that we ask these questions. We're looking to give out our survey at every event, and that allows us to have analytical quantification of our results. We know if our dollars are well spent, and we know where to focus future advertising. We can capture preferences for future events, evaluate programs, and improve overall engagement.
So where do we go from here, is the real question. We have big plans. We want to continue our marketing efforts and look into expanding or continuing our efforts, specifically on Facebook, continued advertising there. We hope to work with an online travel provider, specifically TripAdvisor, to focus on our... specifically TripAdvisor, to focus on our winter visitors, specifically targeting those that are coming for spring training or for the Super Bowl and whatnot. We also want, are looking to work with Phoenix Magazine. We have worked with a representative from there to develop a three-issue deal to make sure our name is out there at strategic times of the year, as well as listings with the Arizona Office of Tourism, to make sure we have a statewide presence in their guides. As Grace mentioned, we are looking to have a larger, more visible presence at our events, increased tabling efforts with new signage, new banners, distribution of newly-designed collateral material that, again, goes back to that cohesive marketing effort, so that everything looks the same and has the same representation, make sure everything's accurate and timely. But we also want to put a face to the campaign. Tourism is a social thing. We want to make sure we're talking to people, getting their direct feedback, and knowing that folks can talk to us and get information directly from us as well. We also intend to create new industry relationships. As we mentioned, the stakeholders, looking to initiate meetings there to create and discuss common goals. We also are reaching out, as I mentioned, to local CVBs. And then we are also interested in working with our local businesses and interacting with them to make sure they understand the initiative and how it can work for them. For instance, we had the opportunity to go out the last two weeks to really visit with a couple of key folks in the neighborhood, specifically Mountain View Coffee, Copperwind Resort, and Desert Dog Hummer Tours. And they all really came back with the same feedback. They were all very excited to hear about our renewed effort for tourism here in Fountain Hills. So that leads us to any questions you guys might have.
Questions? Councilwoman Yates.
Great job, ladies. Out of curiosity, who's your design person that you, is it a local person, or?
You know, we actually went through kind of a competitive bid. We went out to see some samples. Well, we went to, we wanted to see some samples. We wanted to make sure that we, who we were working with had a similar vision and could translate into multiple platforms that had experience not only with print, but with digital and with social and whatnot. So we are working with someone out of Scottsdale. I know her name is Toni. I can't remember her business name.
No worries. Where I was going with that was your, your budget right now. Print media, as you know, it's, it's kind of shifting the other way. And obviously, you spend $65 and reach 7,000 people versus thousands of dollars of an ad. Respectfully, it's just, it's going that direction. I'm just looking at your budget specifically that unless you're contractually obligated, I would strongly advise you to try to cut either way back or even get out. Respectfully, I've been in the airport. I travel quite a bit, and I really had to look to find our publication in there. I just do not think that, that investment is, is, is doing anything for us. And I think $6,000 or wherever that falls, and I can, I definitely think you can use that in other areas.
No doubt. That's part of why we look to work with Phoenix Magazine. We did some research, and Phoenix Magazine is a subscription-based magazine. You don't just find it at the airport, like you mentioned. It's something that people are choosing to read. They're choosing to get it delivered, and it's, it's an active participant-type magazine. So we're working with them so that we have a presence in the valley. For those that may not be familiar with Fountain Hills or all the great things we have going on here, but yes, I agree with you, definitely online and digital.
So back to my question then, is this set in stone? Are you contractually obligated?
No, by no means.
These are just some ideas that you're presenting?
Yes. We are working with her on a project-by-project basis. It's not a contract or a total commitment.
Excellent. Okay.
Anything else? Anything on this side?
Mayor, if I may. Rachel, it's the first time you've been before us.
Yes, sir.
Welcome aboard. I really appreciate your positive energy. Of course, Gracie heard that from us last time she presented her enthusiasm. Just, just a comment. Grace, you may recall that after your last presentation, there was some discussion about putting together a logo for tourism.
Yeah.
And you did that.
Yeah.
And you created an icon, which we also talked about, and that was placed on our homepage, our Fountain Hills website homepage. I'm just a little disappointed that it's way on the bottom of the homepage. So what I'd like to suggest as you ladies move forward is, and as we do some website enhancements, you may want to lobby in-house to try to get that icon up at the top, a little more visible. I mean, we're spending a lot of time talking about tourism. We're spending a lot of time talking about economic development. That's all we talk about. Well, we talk about other things, but. So just, nice job putting that together.
Thank you.
It's kind of lost right now, so we need to get, we need to get more pronouns. So you and Mike need to get together and work through that.
Sure. We'll have to make friends with someone in IT.
Yeah, cookies, donuts, you know, stuff like that. Thank you both. Nice job. Thank you, mayor.
Before you go, could you just explain a little bit about the Find Your Fountain campaign for us people that maybe not, not know how that would work?
Well, the theory behind the Find Your Fountain campaign is it, it's kind of applicable across the board. It's not specific to one generation, one genre, one, it doesn't pigeonhole us to be one thing to everyone. We can be, we can be a dining destination. We can be a luxury resort destination. We can be a golfing destination. We can be a family retreat destination. We can be a wild west, whatever it is that you might be looking to do, we feel like Fountain Hills can offer that. So what we're encouraging folks to do is to come out and make Fountain Hills your own. Whatever that means to, whatever it is that you are interested in, if you are very, very arts-oriented and you really want to take advantage of our arts program, then that's what Fountain is to you, and that's what you're going to find your fountain. That's how you're going to find your experience here.
All right.
Does that make sense?
Yes. Councilwoman Dickie?
Thank you, mayor. Just about the old-fashioned print stuff. So this is just an example of one of our ads, the one with the bike, the bicycle riders and the horses, or is that something that is all we're using?
Right now, we have very limited print advertising. We're still contracting with some folks, but that was sort of our template that we were working towards to really represent, to really show off through photography. You may have remembered that we had contracted with a photographer that we are looking to bring in to really update some of the photos here in town. There's just really not a stockpile of images that really represent what Fountain Hills is now. So the images may change out, some of the text specific to a season or a promotion that we might be doing, but the look is kind of where we're trying to freshen it up.
And mayor, thank you, because I love the fact that you have, you know, less, you know, the other one, I know what they were trying to do because we do have so much. And so like, what jumped out at me is, you know, where's the art? Or if you're somebody that doesn't, you know, isn't, isn't getting out there on a bike or something, you want to know that this isn't just for people who will be actively involved with that kind of, you know, that level of an activity, but like the hiking and the art and the golf were just three things that kind of came to my mind. But this is just an example of one. So that's awesome. Thank you.
You have something else?
Please.
Go ahead.
With all the money you're saving by not going to print advertising, hire a photographer. I know a good one, local.
Yeah.
Get a ton of pictures, obviously kids, pets, food. The redendos just left, but these, trade these out. Those are things that, and I'm sure you can do your own research that you'll find that that's going to grab your eye. And then keeping the same layout, but then just changing out some of those things.
Yes. Well, absolutely. I think that's kind of the idea behind the photography as well is, you know, to Councilman Dickie's point, you know, we want to showcase everything that Fountain Hills can be, but most importantly, we feel very strongly about not using stock images. We, when you see a photo on any of our ads, our website, online, I want, we want you to know that you can come to Fountain Hills and see exactly that. You can eat that meal at that restaurant that is 100% us.
Okay. And I know you and I talked about this, Grace, but I liked your idea of keeping that dining guide online so that store hours change for the summer, any kind of changes, you can make those changes. And then if you want to give them out at one of the events, you just print up a limited amount. So you don't end up with having all of this paper, and it's outdated because, you know, the summer, people change their hours or, or whatever. So that's, that's a good idea. And also, the Visitors Bureau is going to be kept online, too? Are we going to keep that online? Or, okay. And I think that's the one that's at the airport, the Visitors Guide?
Yes. The Visitors Guide is at the airport, and then, of course, we ship out to CVBs, hotels, anyone who should request it based on requests. Actually, this week, we just sent some to Glendale, which is absolutely fantastic. But we handle those requests as they come in. The only guaranteed thing is that we do ship to the airport. And then from there, we try to strategically send out all over the valley.
Okay. And we actually have a Fountain Hills resident that's one of those airport ambassadors. So she's always checking, making sure that our slot is full.
Good.
Yeah. Any other comments? And I guess we could get a motion here?
Thank you. Thank you, mayor.
Okay.
I have one comment, and then I have one question. The comment would be, your work is fantastic. I'm, I'm super pleased this time as, as well as last time. I would recommend taking some new shots of the fountain because the grass is about as green as I've seen it in years after this past rain. And the question is, I understand the fun, and I understand the fresh and the family, but where'd we come up with the fast?
Fast is a geographical reference in that we have, there's a misconception about us being a little far, a little far. Nobody knows right where we are, when in reality, we're really not that far. We're right next to Scottsdale, north of Mesa. We're right here, right in the valley.
Yeah, I picked up a little term from another council member years ago. We're just far enough out. We're not too far out. We're just far enough.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone like to make the motion?
Mayor?
Yes.
Oh, go ahead.
Making a motion, or did you have another comment?
No, I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
After I also comment, you guys did a great job.
Okay.
Move to direct staff to proceed with the tourism and marketing initiatives as presented and incorporating suggestions from council members.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any votes?
Mayor, 7-0.
Thank you.
Good luck, ladies.
Number nine, consideration of resolution 2014-40 relating to a development agreement between the town of Fountain Hills and Fountain Hills Development Group for the Tractor Supply Company Development at 17130 East Shea Boulevard. Ken? Bob?
Thank you, mayor. So this application requests approval of the Tractor Supply Company Development Agreement. The application has been brought forward by Nick Brown of Control Engineering on behalf of Tractor Supply. Property is located on the southeast corner of Shea Boulevard and Monterey Drive at 17130 East Shea Boulevard. Property abuts Sirius Wash on its south end. It is 4.02 acres in size, and it is currently vacant. This is the current zoning map. It shows that the property is Zoned C2. C2 is the intermediate commercial zoning district. That's generally what you see on the north side of the avenue and up through bashes in that area. The topographic plan shows that the property slopes towards Sirius Wash. This slide also shows a number of utility drainage and hillside easements that encompass the property. Those are shown in orange. And the residential neighborhood of Sunrise Point is along the northeast edge. That is Zoned R18PUD. This proposal accomplishes these goals that are listed here on this slide, and the P&amp;Z Commission has approved the concept plan. They've also forwarded a recommendation that the council approve the special use permit to allow for the outdoor storage areas. The council tonight is being asked to consider a development agreed, agreement in order to waive the hillside disturbance requirements so that certain previously disturbed areas won't have to be replicated elsewhere on the property within another HPE. It also revises the parking requirements to require that 86 spaces be provided at a minimum. It amends the drainage requirements to allow or require a minimum of 8,000 cubic feet of detention on-site. And it grants the special use permit for the outdoor display areas. We'll get into that a little bit later. Access to the property will be from Monterey Drive rather than from Shea Boulevard. This is mainly due to a steep grade change along the Shea Boulevard frontage. So access is actually here. This is Shea Boulevard. This is Monterey Drive, and the access driveway is here. The main building will be 21,702 square feet. That's here. The forage shed will be 1,280 square feet. That's a small area there. And there's a permanent outdoor display area, or a number of display areas. Those are shown as the gray shaded areas kind of right through this area with the hashing. These are permanent outdoor display areas. The front, the front of the property, in front of the building, and along the side total about 21,000 square feet. The larger fenced-in area on the north side will have gates at both ends and a drive through the middle that allows customers to drive in and pick up merchandise. There are 87 parking spaces that will be provided in front of the building. Sight lighting will be located and designed so as to conform with the town's dark sky ordinance. Street frontages will all be landscaped according to the town's requirements. In addition to that, P&amp;Z also required that landscaping be beefed up along the north property line abutting the residential area. All signage will be by separate permit. It will also conform to the town's regulations. There are two drainage detention basins. Those are in the back here and here. Those are the areas that will, that will provide the required 8,000 cubic feet of onsite volume, storage. And Sirius Wash, which runs through this area here, is already protected by a hillside protection easement, so that won't be, that won't be required in this case. The hillside disturbance waiver is talking about these two areas that are circled in red. This land has already been disturbed. The, the large piles here are actually as a result of when the, the street was graded originally, and then when the lot was graded previously, many moons ago, this is kind of a spoils pile there. So those aren't natural features. This proposal requests that these areas may be disturbed, made level as part of the parking lots. It wouldn't have to be replicated as hillside since they weren't really hillside in the first place. While Tractor Supply Company has a corporate image, it also recognizes that communities have their own images. TSE routinely designs its buildings to fit in with, with communities where they're going, and they don't insist on a one façade fits all strategy. This slide shows a few variations that are located elsewhere around the state or country. The one in the middle-left is similar to the facade being proposed in Fountain Hills. This is the actual architectural elevation. This is the facade and color scheme being proposed for Fountain Hills, which has been accepted by the P&amp;Z. The second elevation down, it shows the features on the revised south wall, which faces Shea Boulevard. These are the ones that were required to be changed by P&amp;Z to give that wall a little more articulation and interest. The color palette is a light beige, darker beige trim, and reddish-brown accents and awnings. You can also see the black aluminum pipe fencing. In the bottom picture, rather than the standard chain link in other parts of the country, these, that's being proposed here in the drive-through display area and, and storage area. This is the colors and materials board. You have that, a hard copy of that. It's a bit washed out by the slide, but it does show the color schemes. They will not be out of keeping with the rest of Shea Boulevard. It is a main arterial commercial corridor, and this is a commercial design. It's not a bright red. It's more of a rusty red. I think it's called sun-dried tomatoes or something like that. To give you a better idea of what the finished product will look like here, this is a new store with a very similar design that was just put up in Wickenburg. As I already noted in Fountain, the Fountain Phil, the Fountain Hills version, the P&amp;Z required a different side elevation with more architectural relief. That would have been on the opposite side where you can't see. In this picture, this is what you would basically see from the entrance to the site here in Fountain Hills. This is the forage shed. This is the fenced area that's got the two entrances, one back, one in front. And then you've got the display areas along the front of the store for the outdoor displays of the larger, larger items. Planning and zoning commission approved the concept plan, and they also forwarded a recommendation for approval of the special use permit. Staff also recommends approval, all subject, of course, to the terms outlined in the development agreement. The applicants are here. They said they don't have a presentation of their own, but they're happy to answer any questions. And that concludes my presentation.
All right. We'll start with, are there any speaker cards?
Speaker cards, no.
Mayor, no speaker cards.
Okay. Then we'll start with the council with questions for- Then we'll start with the council with questions for Bob first. Any questions for Bob? Questions for Bob?
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Legay.
Bob, when you come off Monterey into that, into that, the drive-off of Monterey, what is the setback distance to the display and storage? In other words, how far?
Are you talking about the driveway entrance to this?
Yeah, uh-huh. What, what, what is that, is that a couple hundred feet or?
Hundred and fifty, hundred and sixty feet, yeah.
Okay. And is, on, on Monterey, is, is there going to be landscaping, as, as requested by P&amp;Z that goes up to that, along Monterey, right up to that entryway?
Yeah, the, the ordinance, the zoning ordinance actually, or subdivision ordinance, requires this frontage, all to have landscaping.
Okay.
As well as there's a ten-foot buffer between the parking lot and the residential which will have landscaping. The storage area doesn't have any kind of a buffer, so they'll just have to rely on the eight-foot wall which is being built along that, that line there as a buffer, although the applicant has indicated that he would include landscaping on some of these lots if they requested it as an additional buffer. And we would just allow that as part of their landscaping requirement.
Mayor, if I may, just an additional question. So currently when you visit that site, there is a masonry wall that runs the whole length behind those, those homes. And it, it's my understanding that you're, you're looking at eight feet and that wall currently is, is, is not eight feet. Could you address that?
Yeah, the wall's probably five and, five or six feet depending on the undulation of the ground as it goes along. The requirement in the zoning ordinance is that the commercial property backing up the residential has to have an eight-foot wall as a buffer. So either this wall would have to be increased in height or TSE would have to build their own wall if the HOA, which currently owns that wall, decided they didn't want them to, to work on their wall.
Okay, thank you.
Bob, what's the height of the building itself?
I knew you were going to ask that and I wrote it down.
I knew you knew.
Let me find that. Back to the, so this line, this roof line here is twenty-four feet tall. To the peak of the roof is thirty-two feet nine inches.
And that's within the zoning?
And that's just the peak, this area here.
And the height is within the zoning?
Yes, the, the zoning district is C2 and that has a forty-foot height limit.
Forty foot, okay. What about traffic? I know people are concerned about traffic. What have they said about trucks coming in? Let's say after it's built. I'm not talking about during construction.
They indicated that there'd be about two delivery trucks, the larger trucks, per week. They only allow their delivery trucks to arrive during normal work hours and there's no overnight parking or idling. They're, they just don't allow that. That's what they've indicated. They are here if they, if you wanted them to further address that.
Yep, that's good enough. Anything, any other questions here? Any other questions? Councilwoman Hanson.
Bob, you said that the, the property drops off of Shea.
Yep.
It's, it's kind of down lower. About how far is the, does it drop off, would you say?
If I go back, I think it was, you can kind of see there's kind of a ridge line right there and it goes around, I think it's between six and nine feet drop as you're going down along that line. So it's a good dip down in. It's really been excavated out.
So that'll really mitigate the height of the building as well?
Yeah, yeah, that's, well, it's, it's lower, it's still higher. This area is still higher than back here, but it's, it's lower than Shea Boulevard. If we had to bring everything up nine feet, then, yeah, then the building would be a lot higher.
Thanks.
Okay, any other questions?
Mayor, yes, one more if I may. Bob, so in the event that council approves this, what are the next steps in the process in terms of moving, moving forward?
Well, this is a development agreement, so there's a thirty-day appeal period. Assuming that that went by, with no events, then they could apply for their building, but they can apply for their building permits anyway. But that, that would be their next step, apply for building permits and, and begin their, their site work.
So after construction drawings or work through in that this is more of a concept plan, will, will we be seeing this again? Will P&amp;Z be seeing this or is it just administrative after this point?
This is administrative. This would just go to building permit after this.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Elke.
Unless Councilman Yates had a question, I was going to make a motion.
Well, if you don't mind, I would like to give them the opportunity to come, introduce themselves. Since they're going to be possibly a new business here in town, we'd like to meet them. If that's all right?
Can you tell us who you are, please?
Yes, I'm Ralph Renalter. I reside in Southern Pines, North Carolina. I am the developer for Tractor Supply in the state of Arizona and will be the owner of this store once it's constructed.
And I'm Nicholas Brown with Cottrell Engineering Group and I'm the applicant and developer of the site plan. So hopefully I can answer any questions that you might have.
Madam Mayor, if I may, generically speaking, a store of this size, about how many jobs do you think?
Typically Tractor Supply hires fifteen to seventeen employees locally. There is likely a store manager who's being groomed right now as an assistant manager in another store. And he or she will come from within Tractor Supply to, to manage this store and the hiring will be done locally during the time when we are fixturing and stocking the store.
Excellent.
Anything else? Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I see as we drive across the country, I see several of your stores. How many do you have in Arizona now?
Well, two years ago there were none and we opened a store in Prescott Valley and now we have eighteen in the state of Arizona, either constructed and open or under construction.
And what is the end total?
Close to thirty, probably twenty-six sites have been identified. Tractor Supply, we have been very pleased with our Arizona stores' performance. The second biggest weekend of Tractor Supply, of an opening of a Tractor Supply store was in Yuma, Arizona. That's in National. There are now almost fourteen hundred stores in the country and there used to be a big hole in, in the map for stores in the, in the southwest. And there still is a hole as you go out towards Washington and Oregon. And I think Tractor, we're going to be addressing that, but the decision was made to come into Arizona and come in decisively and it's going very well.
Thank you, and I'd like to welcome you to town if it all goes through. Thank you.
And do you have another comment?
Real quick.
Go ahead.
Fellas, I know what you do and what you sell, but for the rest of us, could you elaborate? Because the name obviously implies you sell tractors.
As, as you know, that's about the only thing that you'd use on a farm or ranch or large property that we do not sell. Tractor Supply doesn't sell tractors. We sell everything that goes on and behind them, pet and, and herd feeds, containment, all kinds of fencing. The, the pet and animal feed departments in the west stores in the Arizona footprint store is actually two thousand square feet larger than back east because we've identified the need for herd feed and for different types of, of animal feeds. There is, as Bob had, had shown us here, there is a forage shed. They'll put a sign on it that says hay barn and we'll buy local hay or in, out of season hay from elsewhere in order that the, that the farmer, the, the horse owner can pick that up as well. So all kinds of feeds, a big equestrian area in a typical Tractor Supply store, medicines, salary, bridals, everything that my wife loves. Also apparel, western apparel, boots, hats, Ariat boots, all the riding gear that you'd want. And then over on, as you walk in on the left-hand side of the store, it's hardware-type items from welding machines and welding supplies all the way through household and farm and ranch hardware. And I probably have left some things out, but it's, it's interesting. And one time a year, we sell chicks, which is a big rush. All the little chicks come in and everybody buys them and then they're gone in a couple days. It's the only live thing that Tractor Supply sells.
Okay, do you have anything else?
Does that fit into our ordinance?
Anyone have anything else?
I just appreciate, I'm sure we all appreciate your willingness to work with staff and with the planning and zoning commission as well as the neighbors that, that will be behind you as far as the landscaping and that type of thing. That's appreciated.
You're welcome. Tractor Supply desires to be a good business and community neighbor. They show that in their sponsoring of events. They love rodeos, what we used to call 4H kind of things. They're very much involved in the community as they come in and you'll see that here very quickly. We wanted to make sure that everybody wanted us as much as we wanted to be here. So with Bob's help, with staff's help, which I can't thank enough for, he's been very patient with us as we've learned this process of what you wanted from us and we're real excited.
Great, thank you.
Anything else?
Yes, Mayor, if I may, in choosing Fountain Hills and choosing this site and doing your due diligence, do you have any projections in terms of annual sales? I know it's going to take a while to ramp up, but given your experience?
Well, I'm instructed to answer that question that if you take the aver, the annual sales of the chain and divide it by the number of stores, it comes to be about three, three and a half million dollars per location. I can tell you that we're exceeding that in Arizona stores and we expect to here. All of our stores in Arizona have exceeded the, the expectations in their opening and in their first year. So I'd say it's a safe bet that it's in the four, four and a half million dollar range.
Thank you.
Annual sales, yes, sir.
Anything else?
I do have a question and then I can make a motion if there's no other questions. Can you tell us what your, the market that this particular store would be serving? I know, I'm very familiar, obviously, with Pace and they've got a, I think a rodeo in up there and, and down in Mesa. I know there's a lot of folks that have horses and different things like that. Can you see what the market that this one's going to serve?
Well, yes, I certainly can. We have a store in Mesa. It's on Main Street out towards Apache Junction. It's been open about a month and doing very well. So the halfway line between Mesa and Fountain Hills roughly will be, will be the, I guess, the south boundary of where we'll draw from. We are, we are working on Pace as well and have a location, a piece of property under contract that we will be in. So Tractor Supply considers that the density in, in customer-rich areas like this, we can have stores within thirty or forty miles of each other and not have cannibalization between the markets. And it, we're very much a destination store. There may be someone who comes an hour to get here. We don't generate a lot of traffic, but few people, big receipts. It's a, you, you come, you buy a lot and you come back some weeks later. So it's a destination and it's hard to really say what the area will be. And we do have competition, Cal Ranch and, and pet stores and, and some farm stores, but they're not, they're not like Tractor Supply. So we'll see, but I'd say forty and fifty miles is not unusual for some customers.
That's good to hear because as I'm sure you heard from the earlier presentation that we're trying to encourage people to come out here to Fountain Hills. Tourism is very big for our town, so hopefully those that come out and shop at your store specifically will stay and, you know, find their fountain, is what we're learning. So, Mayor, with that, unless there was someone else, I'd like to move to approve resolution twenty fourteen dash forty, the development agreement between the town of Fountain Hills and Fountain Hills Development Group for the Tractor Supply Company Development at one seven one three zero East Shea Boulevard.
Can I get a second? Oh, all right, who's got it? I'll give it to.
Cassie.
Cassie. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, seven zero.
Welcome to Fountain Hills.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, fellas.
Ralph and Nick. And I also want to thank Dave Long for his excellent presentation at P&amp;Z and for spending a long time on the phone with me. So please tell him I said thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I will. Thank you all.
Okay. All right, number ten, consideration of a cooperative purchase agreement with Icon Enterprises incorporating doing business as Civic Plus in the amount of sixty-one thousand fifty-one dollars thirty-five cents for the design, development, and hosting of an internet website for the town of Fountain Hills.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council. The town's website was created a number of years ago. It was an in-house project and the current website was limited, has limited capacities and lags behind the latest web technologies, making it difficult to maintain and even more difficult to navigate to provide the adequate information, interaction needed as we just heard in a previous business item regarding our website. The new website project was placed in the current two thousand fourteen, fifteen budget for, for consideration. So it is budgeted for. The state law permits cities and towns to initiate a cooperative purchase agreement under this one with, with particular general services administration bid and contract. Icon Enterprises doing business as Civic Plus is a web-based company that's used by over seventeen hundred governments that uses this platform. It's specifically designed for municipalities. The information technology administrator is here tonight, usually from back in his room, watching us through that one-way mirror. He's out here in front now. They'll provide a report regarding staff's request to initiate a new website and answer any questions you might have regard, regarding the website.
Thank you, Ken. Good evening, Mayor and council. As Ken alluded to, we have a cooperative purchase agreement that we'd like to have approved tonight with Icon Enterprises doing business as Civic Plus in the amount of sixty-one thousand fifty-one dollars and thirty-five cents for the design, development, and hosting of a new website for the town of Fountain Hills. So why do we need a new town website? The current one is about six years old and the platform that it's on is very limited. And as you probably are well aware, and I know Henry brought up, that certain things need to be brought up and made more visible on the town's website. Navigation is, is a big problem and, and trying to get everything with the least amount of clicks is, is difficult with the platform that we have. We're also missing out on a lot of new technology. I guess it would be old technology at this point, like online payments and stuff like that. So what do we get with Civic Plus? The main goal of the redesign, excuse me, is to create a citizen-centric website that'll get people to the information that they're looking for with the least amount of clicks. We're also going to showcase what the essence of Fountain Hills is, the great views and the fountain. We're also going to catch up with that new technology like online payments, be able to pay for dog licenses, business licenses, even court fines online. And then, of course, there's a new mobile application. So you'll be able to submit requests online. You'll even be able to receive emergency and informational alerts on the go. Who is Civic Plus? Civic Plus is a leader in municipal and government websites with over seventeen hundred clients in the United States and Canada. Civic Plus designed the websites for Avondale, Buckeye, Cave Creek, El Mirage, Flagstaff, Fletchfield Park, Paradise Valley, Prescott Valley, and Surprise. They've also designed the websites for the Arizona Association of Counties, Goodyear Ballpark, the Arizona League of Cities and Towns, Coconino, and Santa Cruz County. And that's just to name a few. There's, there's a whole lot more. So with that, we're requesting approval of this cooperative purchase agreement in the amount of sixty-one thousand fifty-one dollars thirty-five cents. This item, as Ken said, is included in the fiscal year budget and would be paid for over three years. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Questions? Councilman Yates.
Thank you, good presentation. So it's roughly twenty thousand a year indefinite, or twenty thousand a year for three years to get it set up and then the maintenance of it is?
Right, so they're allowing us to break the payment over three years. It's about twenty thousand and three hundred dollars for the first three years and then after that, there's just a maintenance and hosting fee of about six or seven thousand.
Annually?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Elke.
Thank you. Like the, the seven thousand annually from there on out, starting in the fourth year.
Correct.
Do you have any ideas to whether other cities and towns have experienced increase in that annual fee year after year? I know it's seven thousand for that first year, but I'm a little concerned as to what it may be year after year after that.
Minimal increase, but they're estimating about seven thousand as long as we maintain or continue service with them. Obviously, you know, there, there is going to be some increase, but with that seven thousand dollars a year, about the fourth or fifth year, we get a redesign. So it's not that we have to dump another sixty thousand. It's at seven thousand, we keep getting upgrades and redesigns and new features as they come out. So it is actually quite a good deal.
One more question if I could, Mayor. If at some point or another, some future council decided to terminate the agreement with Civic Plus, what do we, what do we, what are we left with after that if they're no longer hosting the site?
Sure. Well, we do own all of the content, all of the images designed, so we can get from So we can get from them, you know, download, basically take it to another platform. But obviously, there's going to need to be some work to, you know, make it work the way it does currently. But we do own everything, all the work that they've, they've done to that point.
Right, because I, just speaking from personal experience with my office, once you go from one website developer to the next, you find that there's really not much left to it and you start from scratch, so.
Exactly. And that's kind of where we're at right now.
Yeah, so is this, is this basically a situation where this is probably going to be, assuming a future council continued, this is probably going to be a permanent type of a change?
Yep.
All right, thank you, Mike.
Sure.
And what was your name? I didn't get your name when you came up since we've never seen you. What was it?
Mike Chikarot.
All right.
Councilwoman Leger, did you have a comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mike, you talked about a number of enhancements. What are we looking at in terms of a timeline to see kind of a new product?
They're estimating about four to six months.
Four to six months?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and they've got a kind of an extensive process? And you guys are going to preview it and have input and so forth and so on?
Yep, this is a redesign from the, from scratch.
Yeah.
Basically, you know, we'll be taking content, but it's not just copy and paste content. We're going to go through everything that's on there, look and see what needs to be on there that's not currently, and then add that content as well. So it's, you know, granted, it's, it's more than cut and paste.
Sure.
Complete redesign.
So four to six months then? Thank you.
Sure.
Mike, one of the things that our business people are always asking for is if they can do all of their forms and everything online. And then they can always call up if it costs something and they can pay with their credit card because they say they can't leave their stores. So now we're going to have the ability to do that, is that correct?
As far as that, we'll be joining the 21st century. Yes, a lot of that stuff we'll be able to do online now.
I know, that's very important to them to get that done, especially with the banners. They just want to get that permit. Councilwoman Dickey?
Thank you, Mayor. Will you be making the change, like if there's a typo or something like that? Or will you always have to tell somebody else?
We're actually going to be distributing out the maintenance and updating. So each department will have a representative that can go in and maintain their section of the website. But, you know, I'll have obviously access to all of the site. You know, if something needs to be updated or, you know, pushed out, I'll have that ability as well as staff.
Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Mike, you, you mentioned that after seven years, you would have a total redesign. Well, between now and the seven years, as new features come out, will we be able to utilize those features and then have a full new redesign? Is that the way this will work?
Yep, so as new features come out, we get them immediately. It's not that we have to ask for them. They're, they're in our site, they're there. We just potentially have to set them up, but we get them automatically. And then it's that five or six-year schedule, we do a complete redesign of the site. So pretty much a new look and feel of the site.
One more question, Mayor, if I may. So will this, will you be able to handle this? Or will we have to put a little more staff on to help manage this?
Nope, that's part of the contract. They actually do the redesign. It's all handled by them. Obviously, we work with them to do that, but should not require any additional staff. Everything, everything's done cooperatively with them.
Thanks, Mike.
Sure.
Will this website have, will be able to be seen as far as mobile? Will it have a mobile addition that, okay.
Yes, so currently, our site isn't very mobile-friendly.
No, it's not.
This one will be responsive to mobile devices, so iPads, iPhones, Android devices, it'll, it'll all work for those.
Good. Anything else?
I just have one last question.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Mike, as far as the final look and design of the website, are you going to be working, you're going to be working with the department, with Ken as far as the final design? Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, we're planning to put together a, a group of staff, so representatives from each department, that'll work on the design layout, obviously with Ken, to get that done.
Right, because the reason I ask is because there's so many players and different voices that may have some contribution, which can be helpful.
Right.
But the final design has to stop somewhere, you know, because otherwise you can spin that for months and months and months. So that's why, that's why I ask. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hanson?
So there were two lovely young ladies up here earlier in the discussion about moving the tourism logo to a more prominent place. Might that happen in the new?
We can obviously do that now on our current site, but part of, you know, within the new site, we want to make things easier to find. And granted, we can't put everything on the front page, but we can make it easier and a better design so that things can be more prominent on the front page.
Well, thanks, thanks for all the research you did on this and to bringing us into the 21st century and making a citizen-centric website. I love that citizen-centric. So that being said, if no one has anything else, oh, Jenny Dunn.
Just one more thing, budget-wise, because it was a $20,000 one-shot deal. Now we're talking 20, 20, 20, 7, 7, 7, 7. So everything okay from your point of view?
Yes, no problem.
Okay.
Would you like to make a motion?
No?
Yeah, go for it.
Move to approve the cooperative purchase agreement with Icon Enterprises, Inc., DBA Civic Plus in the amount of $61,051.35 for the design, development, and hosting of a new internet website for the town of Fountain Hills.
Your second?
Any other discussion? Any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right, then, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor 7-0?
Thank you, Mike.
Good to see your face.
You can go back in your cubicle back there. Okay, number 11, discussion with possible direction to staff regarding the formal naming of the median on the Avenue of the Fountains. This agenda item was added at the request of Councilmembers Brown, Hanson, and Leger. Ken, you want to start?
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, as three council members requested it per the council policies, put it on the agenda for discussion, so go ahead and open up.
Have at it.
Have at it.
All right, who wants to go first?
Sure.
Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I, I had a lot of fun with this. I've had several discussions over the past few days with citizens and other council members. And I've got to say that my, my thought pattern went along the line with what it needs to be, what needs to be represented in its name. And it needs to be made inviting. The name needs to be inviting and marketable. So those would be the three elements that I came up with that we needed to put together. And I noted that the location needs to be represented. And I thought, well, maybe just the downtown park or the downtown or the fountain something or the avenue something. But I last centered in on central. I thought, since it's a central part of our town, I thought that would, might be a good, a good keyword to jump on. And then I thought about what the area represents. And of course, it represents the citizens of Fountain Hills. It represents all of us because it's a central part of our community. And along with that, I thought that, you know, it is clearly our, our central part for our art, arts fair. It's our central part, as I, as I said, for calming recreational area. And it's a central part for our meeting places. And the name needs to be created with a little bit of marketing ability. And so what I've come up with, my best effort, if I may, was very simple, Avenue Central. Come to Fountain Hills, Avenue Central, where it happens. Avenue Central, come join the fun. Avenue, Avenue Central, come enjoy the art festival, and so on. So that is one possibility from this chair. Thank you.
Okay, any other suggestions from those who wanted to put this on the agenda?
I was certain you were going to say Central Park. I was, you were building up to it. I was almost positive you were going to say Central Park.
That went through my mind, but, you know, that's used. That's old time.
Central Park West.
Well, I don't know how many people are going to disappoint if we change the name of Avenue of the Fountains. Is this something that everybody really wants to do or? Well, I know, but the, it's still kind of called Avenue of the Fountains. Yes, Councilwoman Hanson, looking right at you.
I think one of the reasons I thought we needed to have some discussion was that we know we don't want to call it the median anymore because it's no longer a median. So I think it was kind of like, okay, let's have, you know, some discussion on how do we want to designate it and how creative do we want to get with that? And like Dennis said, it, it really was kind of fun once you started in with it and looking at definitions of words and coming up with some different ideas.
I just hate to leave out the word fountains because we're putting in all these new fountains and it's leading up to our Fountain Park. I just hate to take out, and I know that we could all come up with all kinds of answers. There's always, we could just leave it as it is or we can open it up to maybe a contest. And let's hear what our residents have to say. Maybe we can ask the Times or the Arizona Republic. Maybe we can do some kind of a contest and then see what our residents come up with and see how favorably they like the idea of changing the name. Because other than that, I'm not excited about any of these that are listed here. Councilman Yates?
Thank you. My two cents are that, that whole area, well, I've got some names, but that whole area is, is called Town Center. And from a branding standpoint, we need to, you know, maintain that. It's always good that all these ideas come up, but, you know, just be cognizant of, all of a sudden, we're going to fall in the same trap. We've got five different logos again or five different taglines and things like that. So this might be something that we charge our tourism group to, to lead the charge on, on that, working with the council people who, who brought that up or citizens group. So I'm just throwing that out there.
So did you want to say your suggestions?
No.
So you don't want to?
Mayor, if I may, yeah.
Councilwoman Leger?
You know, as we spent months discussing the enhancements to the median, I think from the Diaz, there were several comments about, you know, we need to stop referring to it as a median, we need to have a formal name for it. And I would agree with that, and I think that's kind of why we pushed, putting this out there first and foremost. Secondly, I would like to see a name, whether we do it this evening or if it's done by committee or if it's done by contest, to have it before us, before this particular council. We have a couple of members leaving and they worked diligently on this project for many years. I'd like to have them have an opportunity to have some, some input in, into, into the name. So that being said, in addition to, I think, hearing it from the, from the median, I heard it from the median, hearing it from the Diaz, you know, there's been several citizens that have watched that are excited about this project as it's been developing. And it's looking pretty, pretty good out there, asking to, well, we need to call it something, you know? Let's, let's create some excitement about, you know, what, what it is. And I think that if we did a contest, I'd like to put a time limit on it and probably create maybe a host of ideas. In other words, maybe have four or five selections and, and have people vote on that versus right now, just about anyone you ask has a different name and then you'll have, you know, 700 things and then we'll really be between a rock and a hard, hard spot. I have a list of about 10 names myself.
I know, so do I, but I don't really like any of them. None of them really are perfect. So Councilwoman Dickey?
Thank you, Mayor. I was thinking, because of her undying support of this, we would call it the Cassie Hansen Plaza, but...
Or something.
But we just looked, we, we went and looked up just in the, you know, the source and all that. There was terraces, courtyard, plaza, piazza, promenade, esplanade, town, you know, center, Central Avenue, plaza. I guess what I'm saying is I'm in favor of naming it something. So how we get there is fine, but I'm, I'm fine with it. And we can say, you know, the Plaza at Avenue of the Fountains or the, you know, however it ends up, you know, we wouldn't have to lose that as the location if, if that ended up being what people wanted to do and if you wanted to do a, a contest. But yeah, I'm all for what Henry said, you know, before Tate and I go off into the sunset or move or whatever it is we're doing. Yeah, thanks.
All right, well, since we were all very impressed by Rachel and Grace, how about we turn this over to them and have them reach out to citizens and put it out there that we're, we're looking for, we're looking for a name? And maybe they can come back with some choices that, since they, we all feel they've been doing a great job marketing. They seem to have that, that knack for knowing what people like too. So we want something that's not only pleasing for our residents, but something for visitors too. Councilman Yates?
I agree, Mayor, but let's put a date on it and preferably before the, the last, probably November?
The last meeting in November.
That would be it?
Well, before that.
Okay.
So what do you suggest?
I'm saying the last meeting in November.
The last meeting in November, okay.
That would still give us enough time if, I don't know, if some, something else needed to be done, we could get it done before the end of the year.
All right, then we can just do a direction.
Who is?
The new council members will take their seats the first meeting.
Ooh, and that's?
In December.
In December.
So this council, the last meeting is the last.
Oh, then we don't want that one, Mayor. I, I take that back. So then the, now we're talking about a month.
Well, they work fast.
I'm okay with it.
So then we're just talking about a direction to staff, which goes to Ken, which will go to?
Mark.
Mark, which will go to?
Mark's right here.
And then they'll come back to us. Is that good, Mark?
Tell them to find the fountain.
So it's a direction to staff, meaning you, and for Rachel and Grace to put together something that either they're going to work with, maybe residents or come up with something, some idea that they have for getting some input from people too. I know that when we had to name the art, the artwork out there and when I was on the art committee, we put it out for a contest and that's how we ended up with the Milestone Collection. That was the suggestion from, um, the first week in November, I guess.
First meeting.
First meeting in November.
First meeting in November.
Okay, good.
And we can forward suggestions to?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely, to Cassie Hansen.
Just before you guys are done.
Anything else?
Just a quick thing. Ken, you mentioned in the, I think in the material on this, that it's not actually a park down there. There was some discussion before about, once this is done, about turning it over to the Parks Department once it's completed.
It will be turned over to the Parks Department. We've been preparing Mark for about a year to take this over.
Is there anything additional that the council would, that the council would need to do perhaps to change the designation to a park while naming it? Because the reason I'm saying that is because there's probably going to be suggestions that come out that say, you know, Central Park or Park Central or whatever that, you know, designating it as a park, is that something that maybe of significance or not?
My opinion, I can call anything you want to, but it is, it's a park. If you look at the history of Ameri, of parks in America, that the first one was, you know, they say it was Central Park, but it wasn't. It was actually Boston Commons. That was a common area. That's, that's where they went to recreate.
I like, Mayor, Mayor, I kind of like the ring of Avenue Park Plaza. Mark, Avenue Park Plaza.
All right, well, fortunately, we have two newspapers with us, so they're going to write about it and just make sure that they, they call the Community Services Department with their suggestions.
Keep his home number up.
Mayor, just, Mayor, just a point of clarification. What they're going to be bringing back to us is a final recommendation for us to, to vote on it during that meeting, correct?
Well, I thought that. Some of you asked for a choice. Do you want a final recommendation or do you want a couple of choices?
No, well, it could be a...
A short list.
You know?
A short list is what I was thinking.
A short list, but what I'm saying is that will be, we will be making a final decision that evening, yes. And, and I trust our, you know, Rachel and Grace do, do have a knack for this and hopefully they'll come up with something that works into their tourism program as well. So, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, nothing else?
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of council, but to finish answering Councilmember Elkie's question, you can, you know, a park is a park, but, and that's been pretty much used, but you can call it anything you want to. It's still an open space and will be part of the park system once, once completed. So it will be an open space park, but you don't have to call it that. You can call anything you want to, but it will be part of the, the open space system.
All right. All right. Number 12, consideration with possible direction to staff regarding proceeding with the development of a request for proposals for a cooperative purchase agreement, for a solar services agreement, purchase power agreement for the Cotillo Civic Center.
Mayor Cavanaugh, members of the council, staff in keeping with Strategic Plan ES3 in our strategic plan, in particular of exploring new technologies and opportunities that will minimize noise, and air, and light, and pollution, and in particular, reduce energy consumption. In front of you tonight is the staff's request for consideration to proceed with the development of a request for proposals only for a potential power purchase agreement for solar services. Many local governments in Arizona are beginning to enter into these PPAs with various solar companies in Arizona to provide solar energy as an alternative energy source. This project would require solar arrays on parking lots and shade structures in the Cotillo Plaza and the parking lot east of Town Hall. Staff has met with representatives from South River Project, the cities of Mesa and Tempe, who've also had numerous solar projects, as well as reviewed the Cotillo Plaza energy demands. The solar project would have to provide a balanced usage to electrical generation ratio, and that's what this, important part about this, is it has to balance itself from the generation to the usage on the demand. It's estimated at this point, without the knowledge from a request for proposals, that a savings possibly could be generated over a 20-year period, as much as a half million dollars, if done correctly. The facility's environmental supervisor has a, will provide a report on findings regarding this type of project, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have after the presentation.
Thank you, Ken, Mayor and council. The staff has been approached over the years about putting in a solar project here in Fountain Hills, and many of the times that we were looking at those projects and trying to get those in here, we were unable to do that because of financing reasons or other reasons. We have been approached about putting solar on rooftops, parking lots. We even had a project proposed to put solar panels around the walkways down at Fountain Park to help mitigate the cost of the fountain. None of those would ever pencil out, but we think that, meeting with the last couple of companies that approached us, that we have a pretty good product that we can apply to the Cotillo Plaza. As Ken was talking about the funding projects, I mean, the funding mechanisms, there are three that you can do. One is a purchase power agreement, PPA, or an SSA, which is solar services agreement. You can do a solar lease, or you can do an outright solar purchase. PPA or an SSA allows an entity to enter into an agreement to which they purchase power at a predetermined rate over a period of time. The system is built by the solar company at no cost to the municipality or to the entity on their property, and then it is maintained by the company for the life of the contract. Usually, those contracts are about 20 years. They take care of all of the equipment. They do all of the maintenance. They take care of the inverters, which those can be very costly to replace if they need to. And I'll show you a picture of one of the inverters that's down in the city of Mesa. So, the solar lease agreement allows you to pay for solar generating system over a period of time, rather than all the upfront costs as well. Typically, it is paid for by the savings of you not having to purchase power. So, you're generating power from your system, and then you're paying the solar company with the money from your savings for not having to purchase power. The outright solar purchase is the most expensive way to purchase solar. We can't take advantages of some of the tax advantages that the government gives, but a third-party financer can take advantage of those. And that's how they make their money back upfront very quickly. So as Ken was saying, we did visit with several cities, the city of Tempe and Mesa, and we also met with the Sustainability Cities Network representative, and they're out of the Global Institute of Sustainability at ASU. Each of those have extensive background in solar financing. They, the Sustainable Cities Network has a solar financing group that meets and discusses different ways to finance solar projects for municipalities. And I had the opportunity of co-chairing that for about a year. We visited several sites, the city of Mesa, the city of Casa Grande, and the city of Chandler, which all have pretty large solar projects at some of their municipal buildings. This is the Red Mountain Multi-Generational Center. It is a 294-kilowatt generating system, and it's just out in the front of their parking, their building there in the parking lot. This generating system does not generate all of the power for that building, because it is a purchase power agreement, and they want to keep the ratio, as Ken was saying, the ratio under the usage, because you don't want to do net metering. Net metering will, because you're purchasing power, let's say, eight cents a kilowatt hour. You don't want to generate more power than you're using, because then you're selling it back to the power company at a reduced rate, because they buy power at wholesale, which could be, you know, for six cents a kilowatt, and you're purchasing it for eight cents a kilowatt. So you're going to lose money. So you want to keep that ratio down. This is the fire station in Mesa, another one there. You see, there's a lot of residential around that. It's a 185-kilowatt system. This is at the Red Mountain Library, and this is one of their larger systems. It's a 346-kilowatt generating system. Here's a side view of the T-shaped lot, I mean, the T-shaped structure. Now, I should go back to this, let me go back here. If you look right there, that is the inverter, and that is, it's pretty costly to replace, and that sits out in the sun. The newer systems that they have out now, and this one at the Red Mountain Library, is one of the newer systems. Right there, there are the inline inverters. They're much more economical, and if one goes out, it's a lot easier to replace. It's not as expensive to replace, and they're out of the sun, so they're under that cover. All of these covers have lighting, so for pedestrians, for getting in and out of their vehicles. As you can see, again, this is underneath the structure, and those are the inverters there. The structures that they would be putting out here at Cotillo Plaza, they're nine feet on the short end and 14 and a half feet on the upper end. They're pretty big, and that's something that you have to consider when you're putting in this type of a project, because they're just big. There's no way to get around it. So what would it look like at Cotillo Plaza? The site that they're proposing, the first one, is a 108-kilowatt system, and that's at Town Hall. We have two meters here at this complex. The Town Hall complex has one meter, and then the community center, library, and museum, and central plant are all on the other meter. So the larger system will not produce more power than we use at those three buildings. The Town Hall one will not produce more power than we use at that building. So, the estimated savings for the Town Hall is $84,000 over 20 years. It doesn't seem like a lot, but anytime that you can reduce your power consumption and just get off the grid, it's a good thing. The community center, library, physical plant, $443,000 over the 20-year period. That's quite a bit of savings for that complex. So what are our options for procurement? We can go out for a formal request for proposals and open it up for the general public, or you can enter into a governmental cooperative purchasing agreement. There are several out there that you can use. Those companies have been vetted by the different municipalities, and it's a good option for the town as well. So with that, I can answer any questions.
Councilman Yates?
Based on your knowledge of this thus far, what would you recommend? Not talking about aesthetics, but just about the best financial structure if we were to pursue this?
Well, at the end, at the end of the PPA or an SSA, you can purchase the system at a reduced rate at a pre-negotiated cost. So before you even enter into an agreement, you can purchase those systems. That is a good way to go, because you're not, you don't have any of those upfront costs. You're providing shade parking for people to come and visit to the center, and you're saving energy cost. Now, if you decide to purchase at the end, everything that you produce from there out is yours. You're not paying anybody for it. It's yours. So you're, the payback there just really starts to go up.
Madam Mayor, but respectfully, it's a 15-year or 20-year balloon payment?
It is, yes, at the end of 20 years. Now, there are companies that will allow you to extend your contracts for two, five-year periods. So it'll be up to 30 years.
But the estimated, and where I'm coming from is, I love solar. I have a community center that I did this, and I was able to stack two different grants. So it cost us nothing, and so it justified it. But the math, respectfully, just isn't there yet, because the system pretty much is done after 20 years. The economic life is done after 20 years, and so now you're paying, basically, you're back paying for all your savings. So in essence, we were prepaying for electrical savings over 20 years, only to get back on there. And I'm not saying that there's not one, one of the structures. I'm more interested in the, one of the companies building it for us, and it costs us nothing, depending what you guys can negotiate on the predetermined, you know, if you can get a six-cent or seven-cent kilo, I don't know if that's even possible. But that, it sounds like, financially speaking, that would be our best bet. Again, not speaking aesthetically at all, but just from a financial standpoint. It's just, I've done the math on this eight ways to center, and the leasing just doesn't seem to work yet, because the technology's not quite there yet. And as you pointed out, you're buying it retail, and now you can't even sell it. You've got to sell it wholesale, so that makes no sense. That's just my two cents.
Any other comments?
Mayor, do we have any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
No, Mayor.
I usually go to them, though, after we get a little discussion, so that people can...
I'm sorry, I was just curious.
Okay. Did you have a comment?
Yeah, just a couple of questions for Raymond. Raymond, on the 20-year, you mentioned in one of the arrangements, no cost upfront, maintenance, repairs, parts, labor, et cetera, is covered by the folks who we have the agreement with. How about, over the course of 20 years, I would imagine there'd be technological enhancements. Do you stay with the system you have? Do they cover technological enhancements, or what you get is what you have for 20 years?
Mayor, Councilman Leger, I can't, I don't have the answer to that. I do know that it is in their best interest to produce the power that they, as best they can with that system, because they're required to by law to make sure, when we enter into this agreement, that it is producing the power that it is required or were contracted to do.
So in essence, by, through that contract, there is a guarantee?
Yes.
Yeah, and they are held by law to?
Yes.
Okay. Very, very good. Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilman Elke?
Raymond, a couple, a couple points, or a couple questions. The savings that you listed there, taken into the Town Hall, as well as the community center, library, physical plant, it's about $26,420 a year, basically, combining those two, is what it looks like. Can you explain how you calculated that over that 20-year period?
Mayor, Councilman Elke, we had a couple companies that came in and visited with us. They did the calculations on that. We gave those calculations to SRP, and SRP checked their numbers, and they verified, they said they might be a little bit high, but you are going to see savings. So, we were relying on the experts around us to help us through this process, and that's what they came up with.
Okay. Have you seen, had opportunities to see any sites where these solar panels were put in, in what's being proposed, and then they were taken out? I guess what I'm getting at there is, if it proves that perhaps there's another company 10 years from now that we can save even more with, if we were to extricate ourselves from this, or if a future council decided they didn't want to do it, maybe that's a better example, how do we extricate ourselves? And what does that look like after the fact?
I, I don't know that, I've never known anybody that had left a solar project like this.
Or could it be that many of them are still in their 20-year terms?
Yes, probably, yeah.
Right. Because that would be a concern of mine, if they're higher than the average, and I know you said it's nine feet. They're big, and if a future council decided not to do that, what would it look like then? I mean, would you just basically take the panels off the top, strip it down, and then you're left with what you have?
Right.
And that's a concern, because it does look like a big investment.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Raymond, I met with a couple of people from SRP myself, and as a matter of fact, I have another meeting in October to talk about this very issue. And I know that the first thing that our representative threw up is some big caution. Apparently, some schools have gone solar like this, and because of however they set up their system, without some really good advice from SRP, not from the company, but from SRP, they're actually owing money now. I know they mentioned one in particular that owes $10,000. So, I know that Safeway is thinking of doing this, our Safeway. I'm wondering if it wouldn't be prudent just to wait, let Safeway put this in. We, gives our residents an opportunity to see it, for us to see it, what exactly would look like, because just from these pictures, it looks like it would change the whole complexion of the kind of look that we have right now with our civic plaza. And then we could also have some discussion with Safeway as to, is it, did it come out the way they expected? I know the one thing that they told me was that, SRP told me, was that Safeway may be able to break even, because they're open seven days a week. They have lots of refrigeration, and freezers, and bright lights. So, they're mostly looking for an amenity for their customers. So even if they just break even, they're kind of happy with that. So I think that's maybe just a prudent way how to go. Then we can get to see what it looks like. We can see residents' reaction to it, you know, the aesthetics of it, and then have a real discussion with, are you actually saving money on it? Of course, taking into consideration that they're open seven days a week, long hours, we're only open four days a week. I think that would give us a good model to see what to do. That's just my suggestion. Councilman Elke?
Raymond, are there, are there other opportunities? I'm certainly for saving money where we can, especially if there's no upfront investment. Have there been any other options explored other than the parking shade structures, such as the top of the buildings, or something like that, which are not visible, which wouldn't raise that aesthetic issue? Have any of those things been explored?
We have explored just about every option to put in solar into Town of Fountain Hills. We have limited space. We looked at rooftops. We looked at the rooftop over the community center here at Town Hall. We had somebody do a diagram of that. The big drawback with the rooftop solar is, our roofs are 14 years old and 10 years old, respectively. And we would need to do probably a new roof on the community center before we would attempt to put solar on top of that, as well as the library. we would attempt to put solar on top of that, as well as the library.
If the roofs weren't in need of replacement, would that be an option?
Sure.
And could we realize a similar savings that you're proposing here or reporting on?
Other savings in, in measures that, energy-saving measures that we do in the town, right, currently? Yes, if, you might recall a number of years ago when we had the government grant, we did an audit of all of our buildings, all 110,000 square feet. And we did energy savings audit on that. And then we took and, and put those measures into play from what the recommendations were from that audit. So we have done everything from LED lighting to redoing lighting over at the community center and at the, at the library, and at the museum as well.
Thank you.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council. Correct me if I'm wrong, Raymond, we don't have enough square footage of roof to, that's equivalent to that, to what's going to be needed.
The size of system that would fit on the Town Hall, the community center, library, and Physical Plant would be about a 440-kilowatt system. That would be just about where we're at right now. So we could do it, but it would be after replacing the roof.
Let me go to this side, someone on this side, Councilman Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you give me roughly the longevity of a cell, of a collector? How long will a good collector live in Arizona?
Well, if you talk to the people out there that are, that have been using solar for years, your solar panels can last a long, 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 long time. Long after they're, they're expected to, their useful life. They may not generate as much, but they're still going to be generating power for you. They're, they don't just die. I mean, some of them do, that's a defective one. But if it's a good solar system, it's going to last you a good, long time.
That's considerably different than what I've been reading. And the inverters, are the inverters a 20-year investment?
No, they're not. The large inverter that I showed you at the Mesa site, that is outside, it's about, it's got to be about 10 feet long, probably six or seven feet tall. That's probably pretty expensive to replace. The new ones that they're doing now, the inline inverters, they're much smaller, and they're protected from the sun, so you're going to get a lot better life out of those.
So at the, if you've been following, and I'm sure you have, what is the 20-year buyout? I mean, on a system this size that you're recommending for the, or that we're looking at for the town of Fountain Hills, what would the buyout end up being?
You know, I'm sorry that I can't answer that. I really don't know what it is. But they did say it was at a significant, and it's negotiated, you negotiate it upfront. It's not something that is set, it's something that, it's fair market value.
Well, I see solar as a truly up-and-coming practice, especially in Arizona where we have plenty of sun. I would be very hesitant to think that the collectors would last 20 years, and then for us to buy them at the end of 20 years. Maybe we could negotiate a zero buyout or something like that. Other than that, I would be quite hesitant to even talk with them.
Councilman Brown, there is that, the one company that I just got done talking with, and this is the same one that's doing the Safeway project, they offer two, five-year extensions on that same contract. So it would be a 30-year contract, and they would still take care of all of the equipment.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Dickey?
Thank you, Mayor. And some of the things that we're talking about, I think that the RFP process is the way to get around what you're talking about with the rate, because that's kind of why we couldn't move forward before this, because we couldn't get that to be the rate that we want. The idea of the buyout, the idea of all of that, and all of the protections that we would want before we would move forward for something like this would be a product of the RFP. The idea of waiting for Safeway, it's kind of a full circle here. One of the first things in 2006, I think it was my first meeting, and staff was really mad at me, but they were going to spend over $400,000 for parking, for the police cars, and for staff. And this was something that the council, right there, because you know, that's when you do the budget, April, and they had it in the budget. And I was like, eh, you know, you want to really do something like that without looking at solar? So it's eight, more than eight years ago. So the thing that we were looking to spend $400,000 on, which is parking structures with no benefit, is something we would get at no cost with savings, and with certain things that I think we would want to build in to the RFP. And I understand the caution, but I also think it's kind of like, if you go to ASU, you could do City of Scottsdale, Lake, City of Lake Havasu City, all of these examples, what, are they all just making, you know, irresponsible decisions here? Or is there a model for us to follow that makes this work successfully? And again, bottom line is, we'd be using less energy, we're taking less energy, we are creating energy, which is part of a goal in itself, in addition to saving, whether it's $30,000 a year, or we don't know what the, what the rates are going to be. This is an estimate, and that's, that's true. So obviously, I'm in favor of moving forward with this, it's been a long time. And, and again, we had been waiting for the numbers to pencil out, which was Raymond's words for the last few years that we've been looking at this closely. So obviously, I want to move ahead, but not in a reckless way. I don't think moving ahead to do an RFP in a way that addresses the items. And, I mean, the city of Mesa has these things all over the place, ASU does. There are a lot of school districts doing it successfully. So I understand that people can probably make mistakes doing it, and that's not what we would do. So I guess that's what I'm putting out there for the concerns that you have mentioned, is that I believe there are answers for them, but we would have to move forward in a way that was smart.
Raymond, we see quite a few of these solar companies have gone out of business. What if we went into business with one, and then five years from now, they closed up? Then what happens?
I can't answer that.
Okay, well, that's...
In the contract.
Mayor, the only thing I can say is, if, if we entered into with a reputable company that other municipalities have already vetted, that is, that is one thing that we can do to make sure that we're doing it smartly. And some, some of those companies, a lot of them, offer their purchasing power with no escalators. That means the cost of your electricity that you purchase from them does not go up for the life of the contract.
You know, I would feel much better with this if SRP, when I met with them, was really jumping at this and very excited, because SRP, they're not in this business. So they're not competing as far as with companies. And you would think that they would want, since they always have trouble generating power in the summer, you would think that they would want us to do this, but they certainly weren't jumping at it. They were very cautious, and they did say there's, there's been a lot of mistakes out there. And as far as ASU goes, ASU got a special deal with APS, that's why ASU was able to do that. And of course, they're using taxpayer dollars, so that's always easier to do than private companies. So I just think there's a lot of caution here, and I don't see any reason to jump into this without really careful examination.
Councilwoman Hanson, did you want to, was that?
No.
Oh.
I'm just exercising my finger.
Sometimes that's the way you signal me.
I know, I'm just...
Councilman Yates?
Quick question to go through the exercise, and the RFP, I wouldn't be totally against that. But how much would that cost for this type of RFP?
Some staff time, hours.
Okay.
But some cost from the, from legal to help put that together.
Well, I still don't, with Safeway coming in, using the same company, I don't see why the big rush is, why we can't just wait and see how successful it is with Safeway. That's going to tell us a lot, that's going to tell us how efficient the company is, how well the solar works, if they're actually seeing the return that the company promised them. I think that's a great model. We're looking for a model to see if it works, that's right here in Fountain Hills. I don't see why we have to rush into it. Let's just see if it actually does what it says it does.
Mayor, if I may, they, I mean, obviously, if we went out for an RFP, we would not be able to say we were definitely going to get that, that company. We are able to create the conditions that we want when we put out an RFP. There's nothing that's going to happen at Safeway that hasn't already happened at almost, well, just however many cities I want to point out, or stores, or schools, or whatever. So I don't, I don't see that whether they fail or are successful, that that really would determine what our experience would be. And I also, with no disrespect, as Jon Stewart always says, I don't think SRP and APS are all that solar-friendly these days. There's been a lot of talk, and, and they may not be in the solar business. I know SRP does have EnergySmart, and there's a lot of talk about that, but it is competition for them, and they are trying to sell energy in a different way. And so I, I certainly welcome their input and their expertise, but I'm not going to take advantage, I mean, I'm not going to take advice necessarily on whether we move forward with something like this, which would provide shade structures. When we talked about the shade structures before, for the police cars, it was like, you know, they needed to be out of the sun, they had all this electronic equipment. So we're getting free infrastructure, and then obviously, the energy savings and all of that other stuff. So that's just my...
Well, one of the other reasons why I'd like to see Safeway first is I'd like to look at the aesthetics. I'd like to look at what it actually looks like in our town and how the residents feel about it. The residents may look at that and say, that is really ugly, we don't want that in our town, and that's going to spoil our entire civic plaza. They can, you can look at pictures of other towns and see, or go to other towns, but that's not in our town. That's why our P&amp;Z was very particular about the color of the building and, and the tractor supply, because people in this town are very concerned with everything fitting in and the desert environment and how things look. So we get to see how it looks, we get feedback from people first. And I'm cautious about these figures, about how much we're going to make on that. There's just a lot of red flags. Councilman Yates?
Do we know when Safeway is starting supposedly?
I talked to the company, and Safeway is putting in solar on all of their Safeway stores. It is in line, but it is not in the queue yet. It's just, it, they couldn't, they didn't want to tell me when it was going to go in.
Got it.
Raymond, we're looking at a shade structure with a panel on top of it. And we, we know what shade structures look like, they're all over the valley, and they don't appear to be that aesthetically unpleasing. You put a panel on top of them, I've seen them, it's, it's, well, as I said, aesthetics is a subjective scenario. And I would think that our citizens' opinion would be varied, if you may. I'm interested in a project like this because of our, of our revenue, of our, of our capacity for revenue and our increased cost. And saving $26,000 a year on our electric bill would be huge. Now, let's say that those numbers are not correct. Saving $10,000 on our electric bill would be very important. Saving, any savings on our electrical bill, to me, would be a positive net gain. Now, the system you designed is 108 kilowatts. By design, you're under-designing it, so we're getting less power than we use. And there's typically, in that type of system, in a residential package, in my experience, a higher guarantee of success, because you're going, asking for less than what you're, what you're generating. In terms of the technology, the technology has moved very slowly. People are saving money, as I stated. If they, if their calculations, according to SRP or whomever, are high, I think, what'd you come up with, $26,240?
$420.
$420? Cut that in half, let's say that their, their engineers, you know, their error coefficient is off by 100%, we're still looking at significant savings. I would agree with Councilwoman Dickey. I think the only way to get our arms wrapped around this and have a comfort level is to go out with an RFP with the conditions that we are controlling, and we can take a look at it. In terms of Safeway, they're designing a different system. And about the only, only thing that would help, and I would agree with the mayor, is it would give us a visual of it. But in terms of the performance of the system, we can't compare it, because it's going to be like comparing apples to oranges, because their goals are very different than our own. So, thank you, Raymond.
Just, just to that point, SRP did say that they could look at Safeway, and they could look at how much power that they generate versus how effective the solar is, and they would be able to determine if it's successful, and that model could be transferred here, even though we're only four days a week. They have a formula, and they would be able to tell us.
And Mayor, I can appreciate that. I think it's, it's what our goal is, and I think our goal is probably different than Safeway's goal. I'm sure they could transfer those calculations, as you said, but it's a matter of what our intent is and what our goal is. And once again, if they're 100% off, we're saving, you know, 10, 12, 15 grand, that's huge.
And of course, there's always a possibility we won't save anything, because there's no guarantee on this, right?
Yes, there is. There is a performance guarantee. They have to...
If we don't, we, we're going to make $85,000, and if we don't, then what? The company gives it to us? I mean, how, how does that work for a guarantee?
If I'm not mistaken, there is a Arizona revised statute that covers performance contracting through municipalities. And in those, there, when you enter into those performance contracting, you're required to produce what you say you're going to produce for that person that you're contracting with.
Councilwoman Dickey?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, please. I'd like to move that, move to proceed with the development of a request for proposals for a cooperative purchase agreement for solar services, agreement, purchase power agreement for the Cotello Civic Center.
Second.
And, Madam Mayor, just to clarify, the, the motion is to move forward with an RFP, keeping open the option of using cooperative purchasing with one of the other cities? Is that, just want to make sure we're clear on that, the wording on the agenda was...
Yes, to proceed with however you think you would end up coming out with something that would really benefit our town.
You have discussion?
If I can, can I, how do I piggyback on that?
You can amend it?
I'd like to amend the motion by, by adding the, the three options that you give within the RFP. Whoever the vendors are going to be able to give us a scenario of which ones. I realize some vendors don't do certain aspects of those. But to put that in the RFP, I'd like all the options on the table is where I'm going with this.
Does that be coming as I meant?
So what's your...
Did you put them all on there? I thought you were just saying to pursue the, the joint. Okay, I rescind my motion.
Your amendment.
Amendment to the motion.
All right, is there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, and let's have a roll call.
Vice Mayor Yates?
Aye.
Councilmember Legay?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Dickey?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Elke?
Aye.
And Mayor Kavanaugh?
Nay.
Mayor 6-1?
Thank you, Raymond.
Thank you.
Number 13, consideration of ordinance 14-09, amending Town Code Chapter 9 regarding firearm compliance. Ken?
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, in order to comply with current state law, you have in front of you that ordinance 14-09 is required to amend the Town Code, in particular, Chapter 9-4-3, that bans firearms and weapons in our town-owned parks. I, or the town attorney, would be happy to answer any questions you might have regarding this required ordinance. It is recommendation to approve the ordinance.
Andrew, did you want to say how we got to this point? I guess there was a, we had a complaint about the signage, and you looked into this?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, it's kind of a Groundhog Day thing. Many years ago, we had a complaint that the town's policy, that there was not signage in the park that prohibit, that indicated the town's ban on weapons in the park. We proceeded to put the signs up that include the ban. State law changed, now the signs are inaccurate. And through the same channel, we were requested to remove the inaccurate signs. When we did so, we took a look at the code... When we did so, we took a look at the code and, and realized that we probably should add a state law exception proviso to the language in the code, so that whatever the state law is, we're in compliance. So the code will always be there. In conjunction with this, too, we'll also have to go out and, in those fountain park signs, remove that weapons ban.
Questions?
Mayor, if I may? Andrew, in layman's terms, so that the public will know what it is we're working on here. What, what changed in the law? When did it change? And what is the genesis and the rationale? I understand what the law is today and why we need to change our signs. Correct me if I'm wrong, our signs used to say that guns were, arms were prohibited, firearms were prevented in parks. Now we need to change that to firearms are allowed in parks, but they can't be discharged. How did, how did we get there? And when?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the changes to the state statute were not in the most recent session. I believe it was the session before. So it's, this has been the law for a little while now, and it has just been brought to our attention, again, about the signage. So I, I don't know how we got there in terms of the gun laws themselves. All I'm concerned about with this amendment is making sure that the, the town's regulations currently say no firearms allowed in parks, and we're just adding except as authorized by Arizona law. So that whatever the Arizona law constraints are upon someone carrying or utilizing or doing whatever they want to do with the firearm, those are now incorporated here, including the carve-out that they're not absolutely banned anymore.
So when you, when you phrase it that way, anybody who goes to the park, we have to assume that they understand that ARS and know what they can and can't do? Is that, I mean, it seems like you have to really know the statute when you see the sign.
Well, Madam Mayor, there won't be a sign.
So that we know that?
It's just removing, it's removing the prohibition.
Okay.
The park signs say the following things are prohibited.
Okay.
And they currently say weapons, and we're saying firearms, and we're taking that off.
All right, I just understood what you just said, so it's just going to be totally removed?
Right. The stat, the code amendment is being added to make sure the code is in line with the statutes.
Okay, gotcha. And I think we have a speaker card, so let's go to our speaker.
Richard Davidson?
Hi. Richard Davidson, I'm a resident here in Fountain Hills, and I'm speaking just as a taxpayer and a resident here that cares about the town and cares about where I live. I used to be a fourth-grade teacher here, and am still a teacher, and I'm concerned about the children in the, in this town as well, many of whom are my former students and are getting ready to graduate now, some of my first students. So I think about them a lot, and I think about the, the atmosphere of the town that I moved into. A lot of things happen under the radar politically when you're busy in trying to, you know, keep your life going here. And it just was, shocked me a couple of years ago when I was here talking about the weapons display at the high school, and, and to find out, and the gun shows, and to find out that it was a state requirement that we allow such things to happen. And now we've come to find out that, that this law requires us to, you know, remove prohibitions from, for weapons from parks and similar places, and it just, I'm concerned about the safety of the town, I'm concerned about the, the image of the town, the, there's a movement afoot for people to display their weapons as a political statement, to say, I can and so I will. And it's, I'm just concerned about what's going to happen to the town, and that, I think it sends a, a very dangerous message to, to talk about tourism, about to people that come and visit our town, but to our kids as well, that this is a way of solving problems, and this is the way we intend to solve our problems. It sends a message about our, our belief in the validity and the capability of our local police to look out for our safety, and for us to have civil dialogue and, you know, to solve things in a civilized manner, as opposed to having a gun slung over our shoulder. So I'm a little concerned about wherever this complaint came from, that it is in preparation for some kind of demonstration of this desire to solve problems in that manner. And I just hate to see, see the town become that type of a place. And if the state wants to make laws, it seems to me, I don't understand why the state can make laws about their property, but why when we have property and we have parks in our city, we have to be compliant, but I don't underst, I've never been able to figure out how they, the state can get away with that. They can make a decision out there and say, you have to do these things on the property that your taxpayer dollars pay for. That's, just want to register my complaint and my concern. If this is going to happen, what's it going to lead to? I'm glad that some thought is being given to the, the, whoever's going to see such a sign, that they understand that Arizona, the state of Arizona is behind such a provision, or if they see guns in a park, that they know it's because the state of Arizona has, and whoever's been involved with the state of Arizona, that they are responsible for allowing that to happen, and that it's not the city, the town of Fountain Hills is actually trying to create a more civilized environment for tourists, for children, for the families that live here. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Any other council discussion? Councilwoman Dickey?
Thank you, Mayor. This has, this has been a good meeting. We've had a lot of decision-making, and I don't really relish pointing this out yet again, but the legislature, you know, has demanded that the town bow, like you just said, sir, to their idea of what our ordinances ought to be. And no matter what the issue is, whether it's the fireworks or the signage, how and when we vote, and yes, whether there are visible firearms at the splash park, we're not being served by our legislative team, our legislators, our representatives, because they refuse to respect our local wishes. I'm not going to support this, I'm not going to vote yes, despite their attempt last year to make council people personable, personally liable if we dare to vote against a mandate. I'm not going to vote for it. I think it, we, we have an entire tourism presentation of, of wanting people to, to come here, and I think this is counterintuitive to that. So I would agree with the speaker, and I really wish that in the future, the legislature would listen to the desires of their constituents as we do.
Any other discussion? This is the state law, so we have to, can I get a motion to amend the code? And I don't have the exact words.
Mayor, if I may, I move to approve ordinance number 14-09.
And a second, please.
Mayor's second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember LaChee?
Reluctantly, aye.
Councilmember Dickey?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Yates?
Aye.
Councilmember Elke?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
And Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Mayor six one?
Number 14, review with possible direction staff regarding Arizona League of Cities and Towns legislative program for 2015 legislative session.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, you have in your packet a review with possible direction regarding the Arizona League of Cities and Towns legislative program from the upcoming 2015 legislative session. There were, I believe, 21 resolutions, I think, were considered by the Resolutions Committee and by the Executive Committee of the, of the league to consider, and I think 16 were approved. And there were also two league staff recommendations that were also approved that you have in your packet. Obviously, we're getting, getting ready for the legislative session, starting in January, and this basically starts it for the, at least for the League of Cities, the platform that we have. And if there are any of them in there that you want to start, want us to start considering or highlighting, that we need to start paying attention to for any movement prior to the, prior to the session and to, and when the session begins, that we can start doing this now. And we'll have these on the agenda from here on in.
And I'll just add that the league has said they're not going to meet to start discussing this until early November.
Right. And Mayor Kavanaugh said on the Resolutions Committee, and she could assist you in any of the particular resolutions that were considered for adoption.
Okay. Any discussion on that? If not, Ken, do you have anything else for us?
I have nothing.
Anything from...
Well, I'm sorry, Mayor, Mayor Kavanaugh, I have two items.
You do?
One of them is, is that notice to proceed on the Shea Project was given last week. They should be mobilizing this week. Also, we called for bids for Soloral Project yesterday.
Okay.
And you, I submitted the schedule to you on the timing of the, the bids and the sale of the bonds in the beginning, and hopefully, the awarding of the contract in the beginning of the, of the project in January.
Okay, thank you. Any council, any council members have anything that they would like to say at this time?
Mayor, just...
Councilwoman Elke?
Thank you. I just had a question for Ken. What, can you tell us what's the status of the Avenue of the Fountains Project? Are we on task for that?
We, there are a few things that we're a little bit behind on. We just finished the power. SRP was in the first part of the week to finish up giving us power to the median. I think we're still, we're getting there, but now the, the hardscape is a little, still a little bit behind on it, but I think from, from the last staff update that I had last week is that there are a few concerns about a few pieces of that project that, that might fall behind, but I think it would all come, come together by the end of October.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Is he adjourned?